May I please have roll call?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here, thank you very much. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance this evening on Flag Day. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Now we will move on to item number four, public comments for items not on the agenda. At this time, if there are members from the public that wish to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, if you could please raise your hand. Individuals be allowed up to three minutes. It is council policy to refer matters raised in this forum for staff or investigation and or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Are there any members of the public that wish items not on the agenda this evening?
I see no hands raised.
Thank you kindly. Now we will move on to item number five, announcements and presentations. The first one, we will receive an update from Recology of San Bruno on the success of the Spring 2022 Community Cleanup Drop-Off Event. I will turn it over to General Manager Pinocchio from Recology, please.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for letting me take a few minutes just to update you on how our most recent joint venture of the Spring Community Cleanup went this year. Next slide. So as you recall, this would be our fourth one. We started these back during COVID to give every, all the residents kind of a sense of continuity and they're doing some cleaning. So we started hosting these and the first one was at City Hall back in the fall of 2020. And just kind of give you an idea of where the stats have gone, you know, between each cleanup. So we started off with very low garbage, but a lot of cars, 262. The next year, we then moved it to a new location, which was the Church of Latter-day Saints on Snee, which proved to be extremely helpful. That allowed us about the same amount of cars, but the cars got bigger. So we had 31,000 pounds of garbage. Then we did our second time at that location in the fall of 2021. And as you can see, that was astronomical. We did 439 cars and 64,000 pounds of garbage. So that was the first year that we actually put information into the insert, the bill insert. So we found that to be very effective and that's why the spike in the number of cars and the amount of items disposed went up. So next, we will go ahead and take a look at the next slide at our most recent community cleanup, May 14th of 2022. We had it at the same location, we same timeframe, eight to 11:00. We had about 19 volunteers. A good portion of them came from the church. So we had some wonderful missionaries that helped us. We had our mayor there, we had council, we had, I think, the fire chief, city manager. So we had a lot of great people and people from Recology that donated their time. We did have 301 cars, so the cars went down. We did not have the backup on Snee like we did last time. We did have some overnight dumping, so we do find that every year, but this year was a lot. It almost filled an entire 30-yard debris box. So when we got there on Saturday morning, we already had to exchange one of those boxes. The change that we did this year, the improvement I feel is we did three rows and you can do everything in each and every row. You can have your garbage, your e-waste, and your paint. So we had three rows flowing all at one time. So that did help keep the track off of Snee and kept things moving for the residents. Next slide. Our paint has gone down. I think that a lot of our residents have gotten rid of a lot of their paint that they've been storing year over year. So now what we're getting are the onesie twosies and we are reminding the residents more that they can drop off their paint Tuesdays and Thursdays at our transfer station. We still get a lot of e-waste. It's really much anything with a plug, so we're still getting a lot of that. Some, as you can see, we had 15 appliances, mattresses, and six file cabinets that actually came from the church. And that was great that they came directly from there because we were able to recycle those instead of putting them in a debris box. So lots of improvements. Next slide. So here's some improvements. Every time we do this, as with any project that anybody does, you always find little things to tweak and make even better for the next time. So new things that we're going to do on the next one, which will be this October, we're working on securing a date right now at the church, is we're going to have a bin just for cardboard. So if anybody, I know we've had council and everyone volunteering, you've probably seen a lot of cardboard where people bring things in their boxes. So we want to be able to take the items out and recycle the cardboard. We're also going to have a separate bin just for metal. So again, we're going to try and divert some of that repurposeful or salvageable material out of these debris boxes. The other thing we've noticed actually the last couple of times is some people have crept over from over on Avalon Apartments, asking what's going on. And we realized those residents do not get a utility bill. So they're not getting the insert and they may not be getting that information about this event. So we're going to, we are going to make sure we notify all the large MFDs this time for the next event. And we will bring back our A-frames. We didn't do them this time because of weather, so we will be putting those back out again in the hotspots where we see abandoned waste to notify some of our apartment buildings about this event. So big improvements again, additional improvements for October. We're looking forward to the next one and we really encourage everyone to join in. It feels really good to help out our residents and reduce some of that abandoned waste out on the streets of San Bruno. So that is, that's the update from Recology and thank you for your time. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you for the presentation and update from the event. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none at this time, I guess we're going to thank the church and the elders and the sisters and the folks that assisted and it's very kind of them to allow us to continue to use that lot. It works exceptionally well. So with that, thank you for the presentation and enjoy your evening. You can go watch the game. And now we will move on to item B, received presentation of Fourth of July fireworks Public Safety Operations Plan. And we will turn that over to our chiefs of police and fire, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you give me just a moment to share my screen?
Absolutely.
And are you able to see the screen okay, sir? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Ryan Johansson and I am your Chief of Police here in the city of San Bruno. I here with a brief presentation this evening along with Fire Chief Ari Delay, just to introduce to you and to our community, some of the fireworks safety operations that will be taking place in joint effort between the police and fire departments for the Fourth of July this year and the days surrounding the Fourth of July. I'd like to talk to you, Ari Delay, to cover some of the fire resources.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Ari Delay, your fire chief. Just briefly to discuss some of the additional resources that the San Bruno Fire Department will have available for the Fourth of July, the entire day and that evening as well. We will be staffing an extra engine company and for that day to, to address any threat of fire, we will staff our Type 6 Cal OES engine that we have at Fire Station 52 for the entire day on the Fourth. We'll have all of our fire prevention staff on duty, conducting and security inspections and also providing enforcement along with the police department. We're currently working on a few PSAs joint with PD in regards to the Fourth of July and you'll see one of those this evening. And we have already conducted our annual safety meeting with all booth operators. That was conducted on the eighth at about 5:00 PM with our fire marshal and every single one of the booth operators as well. And we could go to the next slide. Great. And I could just briefly go over some of the safe and sane fireworks use and then I will pass it over to Chief Johansson. If you see on the screen there off to the right on the slide, you'll see the California State Fire Marshal Seal that we have for safe and sane fireworks. This is important for residents and members of public to know that these are the ones that are safe for you to use and operate here within the city of San Bruno. And if they don't have those state fire marshal seal on them, they're not legal and safe to use here in San Bruno. We ask that the public keep these fireworks when they're dispensing them at least 10 feet away from any structures and don't use them near any flammable materials, grass, trees, or brush, or anything of that nature. And we ask that you have something close by to be able to extinguish a fire if it did get out of hand, a hose or any other water source, a five-gallon bucket full of water to be able to douse anything if you're using fireworks. And then most importantly, we tend to participate in the festivities. We put some of these fireworks in trash receptacles and one of the most important things is to have a trash receptacle that's non-flammable and put them in, you know, with some water at the bottom of it. So those are the important safety items that we ask you to keep in mind. And the last thing I would share with you just before I turn it over to Chief Johansson is the importance of, obviously, safe and sane fireworks are important, that those are the most safe ones to be able to utilize, but many of the accidents that happen with fireworks are on the illegal side that we want to discourage and they have different wicks and things that are associated with them that we want to make sure that they move a lot faster than the normal fireworks that you would see that are safe and sane. That's when accidents happen and people get injured. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Chief Johansson. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Delay. So just briefly to cover the police side of operations for the Fourth of July, we will have, as Chief Delay hinted on, a robust outreach and communications effort. This will not only include our PSAs and social media posts, but also pre-Fourth of July contact with known prior violators of fireworks violations, as well as residences that have been problems habitually over the years in an effort to gain compliance with the various laws and to ensure that they're celebrating responsibly come the Fourth. We'll be conducting those enforcement details before the Fourth of July as well. As all San Bruno residents know, the fireworks don't typically wait until the Fourth of July to start up and so we will be out in the days preceding the Fourth of July conducting enforcement operations. All police department staff are ordered to work the Fourth of July. This occurs every year. This is a really big undertaking for what is a relatively small police department. And so unfortunately for San Bruno Police Department staff members, Fourth of July is going to be a long day of work yet again. This will include everyone from dispatchers to clerks to evidence techs, all the way through to every single police officer in the department. We will be on hand doing the best we can to make the holiday as safe as possible. Our enforcement efforts will include both marked and unmarked units. So just know that just because you're not seeing a black and white show up if you called or just because you're not seeing a lot of black and white police cars that night does not mean the police are not in your neighborhood and are not actively working for illegal fireworks use violations. And we will be using both marked and unmarked units as well as bikes and various surveillance methods in effort to apprehend people who are using illegal fireworks or using safe and sane fireworks in unsafe manner. I think that Chief Delay touched on some of this already, but to talk a little bit about the safe and sane fireworks use, so safe and sane fireworks are permitted for use from the 28th of June through the Fourth of July. And from the 28th through the third, you can use them from noon until 9:00 PM and then on the Fourth, that 9:00 PM extend to 11:00 PM for Fourth of July celebrations themselves. These safe and sane fireworks can only be used on private property. They are not permitted in parks or in public parking lots, on school property, or in any open space areas, and they must be used at least 10 feet away from any structures. Misuse of safe and sane fireworks is dangerous and illegal and it does come with the same $1,000 fine that you will receive if you are caught using or possessing illegal fireworks, those ones that do not have the fire marshal's seal on them. So it's important to use safe and sane fireworks appropriately, just as it's important not to use illegal fireworks. As far as illegal fireworks enforcement, a pretty safe bet is that if it flies in the air or it explodes with a loud bang, it is probably illegal. If it does not have that fire marshal's seal, which you see again here on this slide, it is illegal. It doesn't matter where you bought it. If it doesn't have that seal on it, you cannot use it in San Bruno. There is a $1,000 administrative citation for the use or possession of illegal fireworks and this can include social host citations, which means that you are hosting a Fourth of July party and illegal fireworks are being utilized there, even if you are not utilizing them. If you are allowing them to be utilized at your party, you can be cited for $1,000. Please, please, as members of the public, we do need your help on the Fourth of July, but only report violations by calling the non-emergency police number if you have specific suspect information. Please understand that we deal with a litany of calls for service, service that night, both fireworks related and not fireworks related, and random sort of vague calls that say, oh, there are aerial fireworks going off on my street, are not typically very enforceable for us and it makes more sense for us to keep those officers dedicated to the process of trying to hone in on the illegal fireworks use and issue citations and more importantly, take the fireworks off the street. So please do call us if you have specific information regarding a specific individual that is using illegal fireworks in a present location, but please do not call with just vague reports of illegal fireworks occurring in areas. We are well aware they're occurring every year all over the city. So briefly here, I will play the current 2022 Fourth of July PSA from the police department. This will only take a moment. Hopefully it will come across on your screen properly. Hello, everyone. Ryan Johansson here again, your Chief of Police in the wonderful city of San Bruno. Thank you for giving me a couple minutes of your time today to talk to you a little bit about the upcoming Fourth of July holiday and more specifically about the use of fireworks surrounding the Fourth of July. As many of you already know, in 2005, San Bruno voters elected to allow the use and sale of safe and sane fireworks in the city of San Bruno. And fireworks have been a longstanding tradition in association with Fourth of July celebrations. They also serve as a critical funding source for many community groups here in the city as well as a number of sports teams. But it's important to note that fireworks and Fourth of July celebrations are not pleasant for all San Bruno residents. There are a number of people who really struggle with the noise levels, not to mention the fear of fire and the torment that fireworks can create for pets. So I'm here to ask you to please be a good neighbor this year and be very, very cautious about your use of safe and sane fireworks while completely refraining from the use of illegal fireworks. Now, anything that flies in the air or explodes with a loud bang is generally going to be illegal, but more specifically speaking, any safe and sane firework that's legal for use will have state fire marshal's seal of approval on it. If it doesn't have the state's fire marshal's seal of approval, it is illegal to use no matter where you bought it. Fireworks are allowed from June 28th through July 3rd from noon until 9:00 PM each day and again on the Fourth of July from noon until 11:00 PM. Safe and sane fireworks only. Those fireworks can only be used on private property and they can only be used at least 10 feet away from any structure. All important rules to observe. Also important to recall that San Bruno Police Department and its partner agencies will be out in force once again is Fourth of July and in the days surrounding it to ensure that no illegal fireworks are being utilized in the city. If you're caught possessing or using illegal fireworks in the city of San Bruno, you will receive a $1,000 citation and there will not be any warrants. So please, this Fourth of July, I enjoy your holiday with family and friends, but be a good neighbor. Use only safe and sane fireworks and use them in only a safe manner. Thank you very much for your time. That concludes our presentation on the Fourth of July safety operations. I am happy to field any questions.
Thank you to both of our chiefs for your presentation and comments this evening. Are there any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I think all council members, I'm sure, would, I think, would, it's not an official vote, but I think it would be a five vote to thank our public safety personnel, our other city staff that do avail themselves and are required and take their time away from their friends, family, and other opportunities that they may have to enjoy in their fourths so that this city of San Bruno can enjoy its fourth and still feel safe and secure thanks to all of you. So thank you to both of you and I can't tell you to go and enjoy the game. You're going to stick with us for the rest of the items on the agenda. So with that, we will move on to the next item, item C, San Bruno Recreation and Aquatic Center update and set public hearing for June 28th, 2022 to consider adopting resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a power purchase agreement with Enslid Clean Energy. And we're going to hear more about this from our Public Works Director, Matt Lee, please.
Thank you, Mayor Medina, and good evening, members of the city council. I will start the presentation with the.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before we go into the action today, we'll first have Rod MacRae, our project manager for the RAC, provide his quarterly RAC update and then we'll move into the session on solar panels and the action for council. Rod, take it away.
Thank you, Matt, again. Good evening, Mayor Medina and the members of the city council and everyone that's doing tonight. My name is Rod MacRae. I'm the project manager for the Recreation Aquatic Center. I will be providing you a construction update. We do have a small agenda, just like last time. We have the project information update, we'll have the completed to date, schedule update, change order report, included in that is the budget update and what we're looking at for the next 30 days. Project information update. We started in September 2021, as we all know, and we are still trending to complete by fall 2023. To this date, we have made some good progress last month. To the end of the month, we are about 19%. We should be about 20% at this time. That amount represents the amount of the contractor can invoice us contractually to this date. As you can see, the earth comes available for to view the pictures of what's going on out there as well as we have a photo taken on drone back in June 8th, as you can see, an aerial shot of the project progress. Just to recap what we have done for the last five months since the last time we made a report to the council, just going through this quickly, back in February, we started with our soil nail. We worked with the design team, building inspector, archaeological monitoring team. We didn't have any issues and we completed all the planned work on schedule. March, we continued that same work, working on the soil nail wall, worked with the same team. And we encountered some contaminated soil, but we were able to find a home for it and got it all disposed and completed the task on schedule. In April, as we cleaned up the area, we were able to start the work for the GeoPure Foundation. And at the same time, while doing that, we started working on the crosswalk and sidewalk improvement of the Soto Way and City Parkway. All work been coordinated with the same group of team, completed every planned work on that month on schedule. In May, in May month, we continue, which is last month, we continue our GeoPure Foundation and completed that at the same month and worked on the soil nail wall, furnace, finished surface and began the foundation work. And we, at the same time, we coordinated with the same team and completed all the work as planned. In June, we started this month with our foundation work. We continued the same work as last month. You can see more progress on that. We have rebars being put in. We also started some of the creek and park related work. We worked closely with the same team, including the biologists who coordinated our work with the US Army Corps of Engineers, California Department of Parks, Fish and Wildlife, and Regional Water Control Board. Contractor all sent out their public notification, including the door hangers, put out some of the notification for the picnic park that will be affected by this work. Let's just show you some of the photos that we have from last, from February to this month. So this is the February month where we have soil nail work started from the top and we continued that on this, on the next month of March. As you can see, we, the process is we start cutting the slope and drilling the nails and start grounding them and testing them and shot script them on, shown on the photo number four, and we continue the same process to get to the bottom of the wall. In April, after completing all that work, we disposed the contaminated soil and started the GeoPure and the same time we completed the sidewalk and crosswalk improvement of the Soto Way and City Parkway. In May, as I described, we worked on the surface wall of the retaining wall and completed the GeoPure and prep up for the foundation work. On same month, we started the foundation work as shown on the bottom picture. After we completed the GeoPure, we start digging for the foundation for the building. And in June, we continued that same process. We could see how much we have dug already. We start setting some rebars, setting some block out for some underslung utilities. In same month, this month, we continued to progress with the rebars being placed in different locations. I think we have more place, we have more E-bar placed at this time since the last photo. And this month, we were able to mobilize our work for creek park related work. We put in our temporary fence in the park as within, within the south, outside the wet creek area. Schedule update, as you can see, work continued to ramp up. Multiple activity trades are now working simultaneously, both in the field and their respective shops. Material are being delivered, some is about to be delivered, some are being fabricated to coordinate with the construction schedule. In the field grading, steelworkers, pool contractors, plumbers, electrician, landscape contractor are now actively working. The building steel framing is on fabrication. Almost all the long lead.
Longstanding tradition in association with Fourth of July celebrations. They also serve as critical funding source for many community groups here in the city, as well as a number of sports teams. But it's important to note that fireworks and Fourth of July celebrations are not pleasant for all San Bruno residents. There are a number of people who really struggle with the noise levels, not to mention the fear of fire, and the torment that fireworks can create for pets. So I'm here to ask you to please be a good neighbor this year and be very, very cautious about your use of safe and sane fireworks while completely refraining from the use of illegal fireworks. Now, anything that flies in the air or explodes with a loud bang is generally going to be illegal. But more specifically speaking, any safe and sane fireworks that's legal for use will have state fire marshal's seal of approval on it. If it doesn't have the state's fire marshal's seal of approval, it is illegal to use no matter where you bought it. Fireworks are allowed from June 28th through July 3rd from noon until 9:00 p.m. each day, and again on the Fourth of July from noon until 11:00 p.m. Safe and sane fireworks only. Those fireworks can only be used on private property, and they can only be used at least 10 feet away from any structure. All important rules to observe. Also important to recall that San Bruno Police Department and its partner agencies will be out in force once again is Fourth of July and in the days surrounding it to ensure that no illegal fireworks are being utilized in the city. If you're caught possessing or using illegal fireworks in the city of San Bruno, you will receive a $1,000 citation, and there will not be any warrants. So please, this Fourth of July, I enjoy your holiday with family and friends, but be a good neighbor. Use only safe and sane fireworks, and use them in only a safe manner. Thank you very much for your time. That concludes our presentation on the Fourth of July safety operations. I am happy to field any questions.
Thank you to both of our chiefs for your presentation and comments this evening. Are there any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I think all council members, I'm sure would, I think would sign an official vote, but I think it would be a five oh to thank our public safety personnel, our other city staff that do avail themselves and are required and take their time away from their friends, family, and other opportunities that they may have to enjoy in their fourths so that this city of San Bruno can enjoy its fourth and still feel safe and secure thanks to all of you. So thank you to both of you, and I can't tell you to go and enjoy the game. You're going to stick with us for the rest of the items on the agenda. So with that, we will move on to the next item. Item C, San Bruno Recreation and Aquatic Center update and set public hearing for June 28, 2022 to consider adopting resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a power purchase agreement with Peninsula Clean Energy. And we're going to hear more about this from our Public Works Director, Matt Lee, please.
Thank you, Mayor Medina, and good evening, members of the city council. I will start the presentation with the.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before we go into the action today, we'll first have Rod MacRae, our project manager for the RAC, provide his quarterly RAC update, and then we'll move into the session on solar panels and the action for council. Rod, take it away.
Thank you, Matt, again. Good evening, Mayor Medina and the members of the city council and everyone that's doing tonight. My name is Rod MacRae. I'm the project manager for the Recreation Aquatic Center. I will be providing you a construction update. We do have a small agenda, just like last time. We have the project information update, we'll have the completed to date, schedule update, change order report included in that is the budget update and what we're looking at for the next 30 days. Project information update. We started in September 2021, as we all know, and we are still trending to complete by fall 2023. To this date, we have made some good progress last month. To the end of the month, we are about 19%. We should be about 20% at this time. That amount represents the amount of the contractor can invoice us contractually to this date. As you can see, the earth comes available for to view the pictures of what's going on out there, as well as we have a photo taken on drone back in June 8th, as you can see an aerial shot of the project progress. Just to recap what we have done for the last five months since the last time we made a report to the council, just going through this quickly. Back in February, we started with our soil nail. We worked with the design team, building inspector, archaeological monitoring team. We didn't have any issues. We completed all the planned work on schedule. March, we continued that same work, working on the soil nail wall, worked with the same team, and we encountered some contaminated soil, but we were able to find a home for it and got it all disposed and completed the task on schedule. In April, as we cleaned up the area, we were able to start the work for the GeoPure Foundation. And at the same time, while doing that, we started working on the crosswalk and sidewalk improvement of the Soto Way and City Parkway. All work been coordinated with the same group of team, completed every planned work on that month on schedule. In May, in May month, we continue, which is last month, we continue our GeoPure Foundation and completed that of the same month and worked on the soil nail wall furnace finish surface and began the foundation work. And we, at the same time, we coordinated with the same team and completed all the work as planned. In June, we started this month with our foundation work. We continued the same work as last month. You can see more progress on that. We have more rebars being put in. We also started some of the creek and park related work. We worked closely with the same team, including the biologists who coordinated our work with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, California Department of Parks, Fish and Wildlife, and Regional Water Control Board. Contractor all sent out their public notification, including the door hangers, put out some of the notification for the picnic park that will be affected by this work. Let's just show you some of the photos that we have from last, from February to this month. So this is the February month where we have soil nail work started from the top, and we continued that on this, on the next month of March. As you can see, we, we, the process is we start cutting the slope and drilling the nails and start grounding them and testing them and shot script them on, shown on the photo number four, and we continue the same process to get to the bottom of the wall. In April, after completing all that work, we disposed the contaminated soil and started the GeoPure, and at the same time, we completed the sidewalk and crosswalk improvement of the Soto Way and City Parkway. In May, as I described, we worked on the surface wall of the retaining wall and completed the GeoPure and prep up for the foundation work. On same month, we started the foundation work as shown on the bottom picture. After we completed the GeoPure, we start digging for the foundation for the building. And in June, we continued that same process. We could see how much we have dug already. We start setting some rebars, setting some block out for some undersloped utilities. In same month, this month, we continued to progress with the rebars being placed in different locations. I think we have more place, we have more ebars placed at this time since the last photo. And, and this month, we were able to mobilize our work for creek park related work. We put in our temporary fence in the park as within, within the south, outside the wet creek area. Schedule update. As you can see, work continues to ramp up. Multiple activity trades are now working simultaneously, both in the field and their respective shops. Material are being delivered, some is about to be delivered, some are being fabricated to coordinate with the construction schedule. In the field grading, steel workers, pool contractors, plumbers, electrician, landscape contractor are now actively working. The building steel framing is on fabrication. Almost all the long lead items are now ordered and is being scheduled to be delivered, such as the HVAC generator, full equipment. As soon as we know when those things coming in, they are ready to come in. As you can see on the schedule, we completed Phase 1A, working full speed on Phase 1B, which is the building and which is the pool and the building, 1B and 1C. This summer, you're going to see us mobilize on 2A, which is the, which is the, which is the creek and park work, as well as number three, Phase 3, which is the Crystal Spring Road. We are start to put in, mobilize for our water line at Crystal Spring Road. We completed our public outreach, door hangers, notification, posted signs in affected picnic areas, parking spaces. We will use changeable message signs on, on road for lane closures. Our website is updated with the latest project information to let people know what's going on on the project. Next slide is the change order report. The change order went up from 343,000 to 407,000. Same report I have provided last month. This included the 60% of the unforeseen condition that included the additional tree removal, potential has, that are potential hazards to the building and the temporary water line. We have some public safety inconvenience, which is about 38% of that cost. That's additional handling to dispose after this material, material and discover during the demolition. And 2% of that is request to abandon some of the existing sewer lines that are outside the contract. Project budget. Last February, we have the new project, project approved budget, which is 60,540,228. In that amount, we spent about, we spent 16,141,124 to date. What's spent to date included the pre-construction and the construction expenses. The pre-construction included is 6.8 million. The construction cost spent to date is 9.3 million. The approved budget in this presentation is broken down into three categories. We have the soft costs, the project contingency, and the construction cost, which is the actual contractor bid for the project. The soft cost included design fees, project management fees, construction management fees, permit fees, inspection fees, environmental fees, and other project-related tasks on the project. That includes all the costs that were spent before the project start construction. So we are about 60% spent on the soft cost, and the project contingency is we spent about 3.65% to date that is being included. And the construction cost spent so far is spent 18.39%, which is equivalent to a certain amount. I don't have it in here. So that's our project budget. So we, our budget looks healthy to this time, and we're looking to maintain that healthy budget moving forward. As far as what's going on the next 30 days, our contractor will be focusing on the foundation work, as you can see, as some of the pool-related work, undersloped utilities. This work will be paid use detail, and will be critical to the building frame or currently in fabrication. The offsite work will be looking at the park, the city Parkway, and work on Crystal Spring Road. As you can see, the blue is the existing creek that is now fenced off. The green is now, is the new creek, this is now fenced off, and we're able to install the temporary fence around that. Above that, you can see a water line on Crystal Spring. We're about to start that as well. So let me look at a close look of the area. Like I said, the, the work, the green is the new creek. The water line will be up above on the Crystal Spring that we're about to start. The new creek will be waiting for some, a go signal from biologists to get us, to get that removed, but we will be able to start some of the area below that creek line or the existing creek to keep us going. The water line, the water line at Crystal Spring would begin right after our tree removal, that is, the city's tree removal program along Crystal Spring that will also take place next week. After that, we'll start our water line. So we are, to sum it all up, we are progressing as expected. Work is ramping up. We are operating within our full budget. We are not seeing major challenges to this date that would drastically delay or delay our project or break our budget. And we're hoping to continue this report, to report positive progress in the next update. So I think that's all I can say, and that should conclude our construction update. So I will now turn it over to our Public Works Director to talk about the solar update.
Good evening again, council. My name is Matt Lee, Public Works Director. Rod, next slide, please. And so as our presentation tonight is equal two parts. One part is the RAC update, and then the other component is to talk about the solar panel and the approach that staff has found to be able to move forward with solar panels on the rack. A little history, we take a step back. The rack was always envisioned in its original design to have solar panels, but as we went through the design process, it was valued engineer out just based on cost, but there was always a desire for the city to have solar panels on the facility if not having solar ready. And so what staff has been doing throughout this whole time as we start construction, we've tried to look at a variety of options, funding options to be able to fund it outright or other options to installing solar panels. And so I think we came up with a good solution, and so I wanted to talk first with kind of the variety of options that we kind of looked into. Next slide, please. So the first option, as we all know, is just purchasing the solar panels outright. You know, you will be able to realize your savings in full from, from the power that is generated by the solar panels, but the downside to that is needing an upfront capital investment, which is a significant amount of funds. I think previous estimates for our solar panel was approximately between 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars that would be needed for our capital costs to install the solar panels. So with that, staff has been trying to research other funding sources and opportunities, and there haven't been many on the market for public facilities. So we looked into option number two, which is on the next slide. So option number two is a power purchase agreement. What a power purchase agreement does is it leverages the savings from the generation of a solar panel to pay for the upfront capital cost of the panels themselves. So there, the benefits of it is that there is no upfront cost. Staff enters into agreement with the, a vendor or another public agency to solicit, manage, and install the solar panels on the facility. And so this was an option that was more attractive to, to the team as we were unable to find a dedicated funding source for the solar panels. Next slide, please. And so an example of what a power purchase agreement is, just a quick calculation to kind of walk through what it is. If you look at the box on your left, before solar panels, we assume a thousand kilowatt hour a month, an average utility rate of about 2 cents per kilowatt hour. We, let's assume your bill is $200. If we install a solar system with the power purchase agreement through a vendor, and we assume that you're generating 800 kilowatts a month, and the power purchase agreement rate is at 14 cents a kilowatt hour, that comes to 112 dollars. And then because you're generating only 80% of your solar, you're still having to purchase off the grid, on the calculation on the right, you're still needing 200 kilowatt hours at the same rate of 20 cents from the, from the, from the grid, and that comes out to 40 dollars. So your new cost of the solar panels will generally be about 152 dollars. Next button, please. And so with that, if you take what your cost was before solar panels, that 200 dollars, and subtract the general new cost with the solar panels, you still have a 48 dollar savings, which is about approximately 24%. Next slide, please. And so moving into kind of just, kind of a back, back the envelope projection on what the San Bruno Aquatic Center would, would acquire. We have an assumed estimated total electric bill per year of 80,000 dollars. Next button, please. And then the estimated equipment cost and administrative cost annually for the solar panels through the power purchase agreement would be, next button, 52,000 dollars. And so that brings us a net savings of approximately 36,000 dollars. If we project that out over 20 years, that's 1.4 million dollars in savings in addition to the cost that would be incurred through the power purchase agreement. So what that means is that the city would still be able to realize solar panels at the rack and be able to save 1.4 million dollars over the 20-year term of the agreement. Next slide, please. And so the, there, there are many vendors and agencies that provide this service. What the city was able to do was we were able to identify Peninsula Clean Energy as the agency to help with this effort. Peninsula Clean Energy is Samatell's not-for-profit locally-led electricity provider. They help the county with, help the county provide, help the county with alternative energy sources to, alternative energy sources to the billing. Next slide, please. The, the program that they're actually working on at the moment is a government solar program because generally it happens for private entities and businesses and residential buildings. So they developed this program, help local governments get onsite solar for their facilities to reduce the energy costs and meet sustainability goals. The benefits of going with this program is to engage, to have them help us engage in technical support installing solar panels, help drive down costs of the installation through aggregation of a variety of projects, obviously help reduce energy costs with the solar panels, and to hedge against rising utility rates, and then to leverage the federal tax credits and benefits. Next slide, please. So these are the current cities within the county that currently have a council approval to move forward with this program, and that's the action that we're going to be discussing about tonight. Next slide, please. So again, the key benefits of the program is that there is no upfront costs. The Peninsula Clean Energy can handle the procurement and installation and maintenance over the three-year lifespan of the, of the power purchase agreement. And because they are a nonprofit organization, their, their administrative costs are generally small compared to the overall capital investment. And prior to entering into the agreement, the Peninsula Clean Energy will be providing cost projections for the agreement in terms of the solar panels and the projected savings. And working with Peninsula Clean Energy, we're able to target grandfathering into NMS 2.0, which is the previous program that we can leverage to help with further cost savings. Next slide, please. And so what we have today is that we want to have council take an action, a motion to set a public hearing date for June 28th to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a power purchase agreement with Peninsula Clean Energy to deploy a solar voltage system should the city manager determine adequate cost efficiency and other community benefits associated with the agreement. I have Dave Frybush here and Rafael Reyes with Peninsula Clean Energy to answer any questions you may have, or and Rod MacRae to answer any questions on the RAC project progress. Next slide, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if you could stop sharing the screen, please. Thank you kindly. With that, are there accounts, are there questions by the council on the presentation? Specifically, keeping in mind that there is going to be a, there's a public hearing on the 28th on that, entering into the agreement. Any questions at this time? Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the, probably the city manager, I know we talked a little bit about this, but around the power purchase agreement, there are definitely pros and cons to these agreements. I am familiar with them. And I just wanted to ask the city manager if there could, you can make, if there's a review of the agreement and to ensure that it's the, I guess, the best avenue moving forward with a, an individual or firm that specializes in this area? And, and I should ask the question publicly, has this been reviewed by anyone who specializes in these agreements?
Javon Brugan, city manager, Vice Mayor Mason. Yes, I, I know, yes, we talked shortly before the meeting, and yes, prior to the public hearing, we can have the draft PPA reviewed by a specialized legal counsel that reviews PPAs, and so we will certainly work with legal counsel to have that done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from colleagues? If not, then thank you to everybody for time and presentation, and I know this will be setting a public hearing. With that, if there is nothing else at this time from Director Lee or city man, nope, go ahead.
Mayor Medina, I know this item is a little different than, than normal, but we do need the city council to take a vote to authorize a public hearing as per the action. And so if we can have a motion and a vote for that.
Mr. Mayor. We are going to have a motion under announcements and presentations on, on a resolution. That's what, what, what is the ask, correct?
Yes.
Thank you for clarity. I think he raised from, yes, Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you. So moved.
I will second.
Motion seconded, Marty Medina, Hamilton, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. Okay, thank you for the presentation, and we got a motion already, got a five oh start, so maybe we'll see how the rest of the evening goes. All right, with that, thank you very much, and we'll move on to item D, received proclamation declaring June 19th to 25th as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. At this time, I'm going to read some of the wheresses, and we have with us our mosquito vector board of director member, and this again is declaring June 19th to the 25th as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week in the city of San Bruno. Whereas professional mosquito and vector control based on scientific research has made great advances in safety, reducing mosquito and vector populations and the disease they transmit. And whereas, excuse, the Samatell County Mosquito and Vector Control District was established in 1916, and whereas the Samatell County Mosquito and Vector Control District's mission is to safeguard the health and comfort of the citizens of the Samatell County through a science-based program of integrated vector management, and whereas National Mosquito Control Awareness Week will increase the public's awareness of the threat of disease and encourage the public to take action in preventing mosquito-transmitted disease, and will highlight activities of the various mosquito and vector research and control agencies working to minimize the health threat within California. Now therefore, I, Rico Umedina, mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim the week of June 19th to the 25th, 2022, as Mosquito Control Awareness Week in the city of San Bruno. And with that, do we have Mr. Rico?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Robert Rico, the city of San Bruno's trustee to Samatell County Mosquito and Vector Control District, and I'm pleased to be here to accept your city's proclamation recognizing the week of June 19th through the 25th this year as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. On behalf of the district, I want to thank you for this proclamation and to thank your city staff and residents for their continuing assistance in reporting dead birds and mosquito concerns to 344-8592. These reports allow your district to more promptly respond to and work to correct the needs. More information about the district can be found at www.smcmvcd.org. More information about the district can be found at www.smcmvcd.org. And thank you again for being part of the team to fight the bite.
And on behalf of the, thank you very much, and on behalf of the city council, thank you for your continued diligence representing the Sam, City of San Bruno on the Board of Directors. We appreciate it and the updates that you give to us in the community. Thank you again, and wish you a good evening. With that, there is, I'm going to add an item on announcements that I was asked by One of the Library cheers. This coming Saturday, June eighteenth, the Friends of the Library Public, the Friends of the Library Public Library will hold a book sale featuring adult and youth fiction, children's books, DVDs, and CDs. The sale will take place outdoors in the courtyard between the library and City Hall from ten AM to three PM. All proceeds go to support the San Bruno Library. And that's Friends of the Library who've been doing this for a long time, and they're trying to be mindful again with our current environment and having that outside. And again, that is this Saturday, it is between ten and three PM. So with that, that will conclude announcements and presentations, and now we will move on to consent. All items are considered to team or implement an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. We have items six A through six K. Are there any council members that wish to pull an item for a separate vote, separate vote? Seeing none, are there any council members that want to either ask a question or make a comment on an item on consent? Councilmember Medina?
Yes, item J.
Item J, thank you. Any other items? I'm going to ask for item G. Any other items from colleagues? No, I said G. The wrong Medina. It's okay. Medina one's going to be J, Medina two's going to be G.
Very confusing, but yes.
It happens. Okay, anything else? If not, let's start to move on to consent items. First is G. Adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Samatello County Transportation Authority Peninsula Corridor Joint Power Board, the City of South San Francisco for the preliminary engineering environmental review phase of the South. Southern Linden Avenue and Scott Street Grade Separation Project with commitment of local matching funds of up to one hundred thirty-six thousand three hundred and fifty. The only reason I'm bringing that up is that it's one of those opportunities that staff and us have gone forward. And again, this is for four point nine-five million dollars in grant funding that comes from the Transportation Authority for grade steps. It's required of a ten percent put in from the cities, which so South City and San Bruno, obviously, City of South City is doing three hundred and eighty-six thousand, we're doing the remaining to make that ten percent. So I just want to bring that up, that that is not the initial first funding that the Transportation Authority has issued for this project and for Linden, but appreciate that and the stuff again, and all of us looking for those opportunities. I had nothing else on that topic, just wanted to make that comment. I'd like to move on to item J for Councilmember Medina. Adopt resolution approving agreement between the City of San Bruno and the Public Safety Management Bargaining Unit and authorizing the execution by the city manager. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank everyone for their efforts in securing this four-year labor agreement. So thank you all.
Thank you. With that, are there any members of the public that wish to speak on consent?
No hands or face.
Thank you very much. Bringing it back to council again, it's items six A through six K. Is there any action from council? Councilmember Hamilton?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion seconded, Hamilton, Salazar, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Consent passed, five-oh. Thank you, everyone. Now we'll move on to the study session. Item A, receive the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three and staff presentation on the capital improvement program. That's the budget. This will be our second budget study session that we've had, and now we'll turn it over to our city manager to begin us on the proposed budget, please.
So, good evening, Mayor Medina, members of the city council, John Grogan, City Manager. Thank you once again for your time and thorough review of the proposed budget. As the mayor said, we are here for our second budget study session. This presentation is intended to be a two-part presentation. First, we will do a quick overview of the city council's questions from our first study session. That was on Tuesday, May thirty-first. We had a very robust conversation on the proposed operating budget, and the city council did ask a few follow-up questions, and we want to begin tonight with a brief highlight of the answers to those, and then we will go to the capital improvement budget presentation for a four-and-a-half hour presentation. No, it won't be four-and-a-half hours. We have planned an hour presentation on the capital improvement budget. I will begin with follow-up questions from May thirty-first, followed by the police chief, Ryan Johansson, who will give a brief presentation to answer a specific question about police staffing. We will then pause at that point and take council member questions on the follow-up questions, and then begin with the capital budget presentation. So let us begin. So at the May thirty-first meeting, the city council asked really six, a number of questions were answered at the meeting, but six follow-up questions. And, and written answers for those are provided in your packet on attachment E. And as we step through those, a question was asked on how do other cities allocate their operating budgets? You may remember that we provide a pie chart in that presentation. And so on attachment E, you have pie charts in the city of Daly City, South San Francisco, Millbrae, Burlingame, San Mateo, and Redwood City. I believe the question was asked by Councilmember Medina, and it was largely focused on a comparison of public safety staffing. As you'll recall, approximately fifty-seven percent of our general fund is dedicated to public safety staffing, and the council member asked for other comparisons. So just really quickly, again, sixty-seven percent of San Bruno's general fund budget is dedicated to police and fire. There are two fully operational twenty-four-hour departments. In Daly City, it's sixty-seven percent, and South San Francisco, fifty-four point seven, and Millbrae, sixty percent, in Burlingame, forty-nine percent, and San Mateo, forty-one percent, so lower than the others. Probably worth noting that it's really just the size of, of that city. San Mateo's police department budget alone is fifty-one million dollars. That's the size of our entire general fund. And in Redwood City, their public safety budgets in total are fifty-six million. So in summary, our allocation of fifty-seven percent for both police and fire is right in line with other cities in the county. But, but the information is there. The next question was, please provide a list of our fleet cost and life cycle, and you have that in the attachment. It goes on for just over one page, and it lists all one hundred and thirty-six vehicles in our fleet, their unit value and their replacement value at this time. We also note in the response to that question that in the proposed budget, there is a proposal for fleet utilization and assessment study. And so note that should that be approved, all these values will be adjusted. The next question was, how do other cities compare in terms of the CIP project and the number of projects and overall appropriation? So we provide an answer on page one hundred and seven, one hundred and thirty-seven of your six-hundred-page budget packet. And so that provides a comparison of two cities, San Mateo, San Bruno, and South San Francisco. And then we also provide reference links for Millbrae, Burlingame, and Pacifica. And that's, part of that is a summary for a presentation we received earlier. Number four was additional information on the Community and Economic Development Budget Enhancement Request for Additional Contract Services Support. And we also provide a org chart that goes through the positions within our building division. And one of the questions from a council members, and I believe this was Vice Mayor Mason, asked about vacancies. So to date in building, we have one vacancy, and that is a community and economic development technician. That vacancy was triggered by a promotion, a promotional opportunity of a current employee moving up. We also have consultant support for both senior building inspector, that was a one-year enhancement, as well as a in-house plan examiner and an off-site plans examiner. And detail is provided on each of those articulating a few things. One for the senior building inspector for large development projects. That is a contractor due to the intense level of building activity we have now, fully paid for by those large development projects. And, and the one that is noted there actually for the YouTube project and their, I think it's four hundred and four fifty Bay Hill Drive properties that are under construction, and we anticipate continuing that because they are beginning their phase one of the Bay Hill specific plan. With regard to the in-house plans examiner, that is a new request, and as we noted on May thirty-first, it is a enhancement for the counter permit services that we would like to enhance the number of hours that we provide over the counter permits. And bringing on a contractor in this first year really to test by increasing the number of available hours, are we able to provide that service? You know, should it be successful and we fully ramp up? I think in subsequent years, we can make a decision on, do we keep that as a contract? Or do we, or do we realize that the, the support is there and the cost recoverability is there to add a full-time ongoing position? The next is the off-site plan check, and that is because we have an enhanced level of development activity happening now, and the contractors are paid fully by our development fees when they use the off-site plan check. And so the responses there are provided in approximately two pages of text, that's a high-level summary. Next, there was a request for additional information on the recent organizational assessment by the Parks Maintenance Division. That is within our community services department, and further details on the proposed staffing, which are enhancement requests for the Parks Division. And so there is an exhibit A, which is a memorandum that is titled Parks Organizational Alignment. It provides organizational charts in significant detail, as well as the job description for the community services technician, and answered the number of questions that were, that were brought up in that. Namely, and this is on page two of five of the memo, it talks about infrastructure maintenance and the segregation of duties and the necessity that the department has realized to create a construction crew. So a two-person crew that can be more specifically dedicated to preventative maintenance and as well as inspection and repair of our park assets versus taking our, our maintenance staff that do the regular routine, landscape maintenance and median maintenance, and diverting their attention away every time there's a, there's preventative maintenance needs or need, or a need to respond to an infrastructure failure within our park system. So creating a construction crew, there's conversations on that. There, there's also an explanation of the need to create a dedicated administrative personnel, provided the title of a technician, a community services technician, to better administrate our tree program, as well as our Acela and SB Responds request for services, and so that's articulated. But, but probably most importantly, on page four or five of the memorandum, there's a chart that provides an overview of the proposed hours and FTEs that are currently dedicated to construction, park maintenance, tree maintenance, median maintenance, and program support. And it shows both current proposed and optimal. There's a notation that we currently have two vacant park maintenance technician positions that, that we are trying to fill. And so while there is not a request for a new FTE, know that when we fill those positions, that will provide additional capacity. And you can see that based on currently, we've, we have in the current year been able to allocate fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six hours to the functions within park maintenance, and with the reconfigurations, as well as filling those two vacant positions, we estimate that we'll be able to spend twenty thousand nine hundred hours. And so I think the full complement of analysis that the city council requested is provided in that five-page memorandum and with significant detail. The last question was a request for additional information on police department staffing. We talked a little bit about the staffing at the police department compared to prior years and the number of FTEs as a ratio of population. And so there are many ways to respond to that question, but instead of a, a very, very long memorandum, we thought that it would, it would be best to provide the city council with just a high-level presentation and discussion of that. And so I requested that the chief of police prepare a brief presentation to respond to that question, and we, we have that now. And so I will stop my screen share and turn this presentation at this point over to Chief Ryan Johansson to answer that question. And then we'll come back to answer any questions, any questions for council on this topic.
Chief Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I apologize, I guess my connection was a little bit sporadic last time. Hopefully it'll be better. For this brief presentation, as the city manager noted, there was a question in the previous meeting about police department staffing, and I have just a few brief slides here tonight to try to shed a little bit more high-level light on the current staffing situation at the police department. So by way of background, that's as, as the city manager said, on May thirty-first was a council meeting in which I had identified police department staffing as one of our key budgetary challenges. This was not new to this year. This has been a key budgetary challenge over the years historically. Certainly in, in my three presentations to you about budget, it has been a, a challenge in all of those. And it's also not isolated to San Bruno. I'm sure that every police chief in the county and probably throughout the state would identify similar problems, maybe even beyond the state of California. So this is not isolated to us here in San Bruno. Nonetheless, you did request some additional information, so I will provide some information about staffing over time, population and other changes over time, how appropriate staffing levels can and have been traditionally determined in police departments, and then talk a little bit about staffing in other cities, just to give some benchmarks and some more information for you. So here is a glimpse of population and staffing over time in San Bruno. In the previous presentation, I mentioned the year nineteen seventy-five. It's one we've historically used because as far as our internal documentation indicates, it's the last time that the staffing level was significantly increased in the police department in terms of standard general fund positions. The population in nineteen seventy-five was about thirty-six thousand. We had fifty-seven sworn officers at that point in time. All of them were general fund provided. You can see as the years go on here, these are done in about ten-year increments between nineteen eighty, ninety, two thousand, two thousand and ten. We sort of saw a trend in the early two thousands with beginning to reduce that number fifty-seven. In two thousand and ten, we had forty-two thousand population, about six thousand more than in the nineteen seventy-five number, and our staffing sat at forty-eight as opposed to fifty-eight to fifty-seven sworn officers, so a drop of nine. When, another change that started to occur around then is that not all of the positions were general funded. At that point in time, we began to secure some grants specifically through the cops program, and since then, through cost recovery agreements with Tan Fran, Artichoke Joe's, and YouTube to expand staffing numbers, which leaves us at present with a population of about forty-five thousand, forty-six sworn officers authorized for the police department, forty of them general fund provided, six of them provided by other funding means. So as we look at that at kind of that higher level, what this translates to is that since nineteen seventy-five, we've had about a twenty-five percent increase in our live-in population in, in the city of San Bruno, about a forty-eight percent increase in our daytime, daytime population, which is essentially just accounting for the large businesses that, that have come into town and the average number of employees that they have on a regular basis. This does not account for the transient population simply moving through. And as you know, with three-eighty, two-eighty, one-on-one, and El Camino, Skyline, all running through our town is a significant increase as well. In fact, with license plate readers, we know that we do about a million distinct license plate reads every thirty days. So that adds an additional burden to the police department because we are the sole agency responsible for handling all the traffic issues that come along with that increase. And since nineteen seventy-five, about sixteen hundred new residences added to the city of San Bruno. Over that same period of time, we've seen about a nineteen percent decrease in police staffing and about a twenty-eight percent decrease in general fund police staffing. So as you can see, the population and the number of people we are supposed to be policing continues to increase, and the staffing numbers continue to decrease. So determining appropriate staffing levels in police departments is a longstanding academic- So determining appropriate staffing levels in police departments is a longstanding academic issue and argument. There are five traditional methods that are sort of looked at. The first is to use crime rates and trends, crime trends, to determine what the appropriate staffing level would be. This has obvious problems because it tends to work cyclically and be somewhat short-lived. So if you want to respond to a current crime trend or to a spike in crime rates by authorizing new positions, and then as those change over the next couple of years, you don't need those positions anymore. It's not a very reliable, long-term way to determine how you should staff a police department. Another way is through simple per capita, simple mathematics that say we want X number of officers per population. Also can be a bit challenging with fluctuations over time, but it is used in many places throughout the country. Minimum viable staffing is another model. This is done typically through modeling at the police department level at one period of time where they look and say, well, here is sort of the policing burden in this community, and here is the bare minimum number of officers that are needed at any given time in order to ensure public safety. And yet another method is authorized budget levels. And then there's workload-based, which would be really kind of, again, similar to crime rate and trends, could be an effective metric to look at, but very difficult to use for long-term staffing planning. In San Bruno, we're probably closest to a hybrid of the third and fourth options you see there. We use a minimum viable staffing model, which says we need X number of cops at any given time to ensure safety. And we kind of combine that with this authorized budgeted levels because obviously we can't employ any employees that are not included in the city council-approved budget. I would make an argument as a policing executive, modern policing calls for a much more integral approach that would consider multiple factors, really kind of a combination of some of these different methodologies, including population and crime rates and trends, but also including area type. You know, it's very different to be in a city with a population of 45,000 in the middle of a very rural area where you're geographically isolated, your policing problems are pretty isolated to what goes on within your city limits. However, if you're in among urban sprawl, as we are in San Bruno, things are very different. Those invisible borders between us and the cities that are all around us, criminals do not pay attention to those things. And so oftentimes, policing in an urban area with 45,000 population compared to a rural area can be very different. And then finally, taking a look at workload measures would be great, but as I mentioned, can be very challenging. But workloads are not the same agency to agency. And San Bruno does tend to be a very busy department, as you will see from my next slide. So taking a look at crime rates, because this is something that pops up, and we tried to articulate how we're busy, or we need more cops or fewer cops. This slide will give a general idea of some data on crime rate comparisons. And this is from 2018 Universal Crime Reporting Data. That data is used because 19, 20, 21 are generally frowned upon to be used in some of the dynamics with COVID and shelter in place orders and things that skewed some of these numbers. We will run into some issues in coming years. We're moving away from the UCR model and into a NiBRS model that will report crime differently. But for now, this is generally what is used to ascertain the level of crime in a given jurisdiction. And as you can see here, taking a look at San Bruno, South San Francisco, Milbury, Pacifica, San Mateo, and Redwood City, in violent crimes per 100,000 population, we are notably higher than any of those jurisdictions. And in property crimes per 100,000 a population, we are notably higher than any of those jurisdictions. So we do have real policing problems and public safety issues to address. And many of those need to be addressed with increases in staffing. The amount of time that staff has to be proactive in addressing criminal behavior is limited by the number of people you have on the street to handle emergency calls for service. And oftentimes, we are shot to the point where mostly what we can do is respond to emergency calls. Taking a look here at some staffing comparisons in other cities, again, I will acknowledge that sometimes this is a little bit like comparing apples and oranges. But nonetheless, I do think it helps to provide a frame of reference. In San Bruno, we are approximately one officer for every 978 people in terms of our live-in population. And this is only looking at live-in population. You can see the numbers in some of these other jurisdictions. Many of them are not drastically better staffed, so to speak, than we are. But even in South City, you have one for every 750 people. Pacifica is the closest at one for every 900. San Mateo, Redwood City are fairly close. And then just to give a glimpse into what it looks like in larger cities, I've included San Francisco and Los Angeles here, where you have one officer for every 408 a population. Or in LA, one for every 390. Those are necessary because population is much more dense there, obviously. And so, you know, the need to, it's much more difficult to police a small area with a lot of people in it than it is an area that's more of a budgeting community like ours. On the right column, you can look at what our staffing level would be if we used the per capita models and had the same ratios that these other cities have. So if we use the same ratios in South San Francisco, we would need 60 sworn officers authorized. That would be a delta of 14 from the 46 we're authorized for. Pacifica is about the closest where it would result in 50 if we use the same per capita model or an additional four. And then you get down to San Francisco and LA where the numbers are much, much higher. The FBI does do surveys of staffing levels in police departments, and they put it at 2.4 per 1,000 a population is the national average for municipal police departments. It's a little bit higher at 2.6 in sheriff jurisdictions or county populations. But at 2.4 per thousand, if we were to meet that national average, we'd need 108 sworn police officers, which is more than two and a half times our current staffing level. Obviously, this is not realistic, given the financial constraints that we have, and the fact that in, the big difference here is that our officers are fairly well compensated throughout California. We have professionalized law enforcement, I think, to good effect. And we have to acknowledge when we look at national averages like this, it's taken into account a lot of areas of the country where police are not nearly as well compensated. It's a little bit easier to stop them at these levels. But nonetheless, for sake of reference, here are those numbers. So that's all I have for you this evening. But in terms of the presentation, I am of course happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Johansson and Mayor Medina. Staff is happy to take any questions on the responses to your May 31st questions. And we are then happy to go into the capital improvement budget thereafter.
Thank you very much, city manager. So you've heard the presentation. And so questions to the city manager or the chief on what was presented to answer our questions, Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. That was really helpful. My question is around post, I guess, review. I know the city did an internal review for about a year of the police practices. We're now in the second year waiting on the third party. And we haven't had an update on that. So I'm just wondering if there are any positions that are recommended, including, I know the chief has done a lot of work to get data, as opposed to having an analyst or something along those lines, get data, not just for the research purposes, but around new laws that have required the police to do a lot more work around data collection and records requests. So should we wait until we have a better idea whether anything's needed? Because we haven't heard anything of that report for quite some time.
To the mayor. Sure. Thank you, Vice Mayor Mason. I think there's an important distinction between the city's safe and equitable policing review and a staffing assessment for the San Bruno Police Department. And so what we did launch following the tragic death of George Floyd is a safe and equitable policing review, a two-part review that begun with a internal assessment, phase one by the San Bruno Police Department. That was reported to the city council and followed then by a phase two. That phase two is scheduled to be presented to the city council in a month minus two days from now. And so July 12th, your first meeting in July, you will receive that report. It will talk about our policing practices and have a number of recommendations for operational policing items, but not staffing. There would be, there is included a analyst recommendation, for example, but it does not address staffing per capita or returning our, some of our chosen positions and improving staffing in the police department. As the chief noted, staffing is very much constrained by budgetary resources here. And the proposed budget does include restoring an additional frozen police department position or police officer position. And so I'll stop there. Happy to take any questions. But I also want to invite the police chief to talk a little bit more about the current frozen positions, both those frozen from the prior recession and those frozen due to COVID-19.
Sure. Thank you, city manager Grogan. Yeah, I think that, as we spoke about in the previous budget meeting when I went through the slides, where we end up today is that we still sit with two frozen police officer positions from the freezes that occurred in order to accommodate the constraints that came with COVID. We also have a frozen dispatcher position, a frozen police clerk position, and two frozen community service officer positions that are still hanging over from the COVID cuts. And so that's where we sit today. The overall picture that creates the situation that I painted with 46 sworn versus 57 is that back in 2008 and '09, during the economic downturn there, there were seven frozen police officer positions, only two of which have ever been returned since then. And so frozen positions became essentially eliminated positions over the course of the years that followed those cuts.
So I think I can just follow up. So I do understand they're separate items, but I also want to make sure that if there are recommendations that are operational, and as we know, operations require humans to operate, that we are clear now whether that's going to be an ask later. So I don't question the needs that Chief Johansson brought before us tonight. I think it's pivotal that our officers are safe and that they have the backup that they need in the office, outside of the office, et cetera. But I think my question is really, is a different question, but it's associated with the budget. Because we haven't received any operational recommendations. We don't know right now whether, in order to accomplish them, we're going to need additional staff.
City manager?
Sure. To the mayor. In response to Vice Mayor Mason's question. So on July 12th, you will receive the report on the phase two safe and equitable policing review. As I stand here today, actually not having a list of those recommendations in front of me, I do know that there is one recommendation for a budget analyst position. I believe that is the, or not a budget analyst, a crime analyst position. I believe that is the only staffing recommendation in there. That being said, we have had, I have had conversations with the police chief and believe that out of all the staffing recommendations, the highest priority are officer positions. And so I wouldn't say that receipt of that report is contingent upon a additional allocation of officer positions. And as we mentioned in the proposed budget, there is a restoration of one of the two frozen officer positions from the COVID-19 freezes.
Okay. And I have not seen that. So I guess to the chief, if, would the positions that you're requesting cover that analyst position for the time being to meet your
There is not a request in the current proposed budget to add an analyst position. I think that is, as the city manager alluded to, in an effort to prioritize getting the police officers back on the street, knowing that there are constraints as to what can be returned and in what time line.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Medina?
Yes, thank you for the additional information. It, it, I wouldn't say it's alarming, but it's, it's a little unsettling to know. And I guess the question would be, clearly, an additional police officer is the request, but can we handle another one in our budget? I guess that's for our city manager and for his recommendation. This is the recommended budget. But knowing what we know, and the council does get the border and the concern when COVID first started and when we had to make cuts, was the, was the impact on our personnel of burnout? And my feeling is that our number one priority as the council is make sure people are safe. And I'm open to improving that safety. And what we're hearing is the number one way to improve safety is have more officers, you know, so they can do more policing. So the question would be to the city manager, I know it's really tight in all these budgets, but, you know, we have to, we see the data. You know, this is the first time, I believe, I've seen data like that. That was so stark of how San Bruno, I feel I live in a safe city, but I've had the car break-ins and I hear about it. And there's just a lot of stuff going on right now. So I'll wait to hear from the city manager of what we can do to, what has to be done in order to add on an additional police officer? Thank you.
City manager, did you wish to?
Sure. Sure. Through the mayor, in response to council member Medina's question, budgeting in San Bruno is not an easy task. We are, San Bruno has a revenue problem, not a spending problem. And I think that's true on every measure. And I believe that we have seen charts before at our last budget presentation that shows in our peer group, we have the second to lowest per capita income in our yellow fund. And that's reflective of a lot of things. It's reflective of the lack of economic development over the last 40 years, largely impacted by a restory hike cap and the other fiscal challenges we have with regard to general sales tax revenue in the city. And as the city council knows, we've embarked on a fiscal stability project and have made a lot of success over the last few years. However, we are not fiscally where we want to be, and we are certainly not able to fund law enforcement staffing nor all of our other units the way they should be. We are underfunded in just about every city department with regard to personnel. And as we know from our labor conversations, San Bruno compensates lower than the labor mark average. And so we have, we have financial challenges on a number of different levels, but not to mention the ability or the inability to find our infrastructure. And as we talked about at the last presentation, we know that we have millions of dollars of infrastructure maintenance. And so over the last few years, and including in this proposed budget, certainly those that have been recommended to council, it's been a delicate balancing act on reductions because we've had to make reductions over the last few years, as well as add backs. And within the proposed budget, there are a number of positional tweaks, but I just want to highlight that there are only three new positions that are recommended that have a significant general fund impact. One of those is a fire captain's last position that costs $233,000 fully loaded. And that is related to training of our fire department, a significant add of a management level position in the fire department. But we had a long presentation from the fire department on the critical need of that position and ensuring that our fire department is appropriately trained. The other position is the, is a new purchasing officer within our finance department for $108,000. And while it's not a public safety position, it does have a, it will have a significant improvement citywide in supporting purchasing and ensuring that the city is not only getting the best pricing for items, but also ensuring that we follow all of our practices. And this is a position that you should know that the city leadership team talked about. And there was 100% support on the entire city leadership team. And the next position is that restoration of one of the two frozen officers from the COVID-19 reductions, and that's $118,000. And so I think in direct response to council member Medina's question is, can we afford to restore another police officer position? I will answer that by saying, can the city write the check? Absolutely, we do that. We have sufficient balance in the general fund to restore another full-time police officer position. What that means is that we will operate a little bit more in the red for this year and have a more negative hit on our general fund fund balance. But we are able to do that. It will certainly impact our longer-term fiscal plans and add additional costs. But we will do what we do and if so directed from the city council, we will adjust. It's also worth noting that it is an option to even temporarily fund that position from the major G sales tax. There is sufficient balance in that fund to fund a officer position even on a temporary basis. And so I do think that there are the resources available to us if we choose to. And so I do think that there are the resources available, um, to us if, if we choose to do that, but it's, it's a delicate balancing act.
Are there questions from colleagues on the presentation so far? I, I may not have a question, maybe, I'm going to ask some questions, but maybe just a statement is that I, I know we utilize the word, this is specifically a police department, or we're adding new officer, we're not adding, we're restoring. It's a totally different word, totally different. And I will tell you, it goes back some time, and I know it was a joke about how long I've been here, but there was some time that goes back that, uh, a city manager, not ours, uh, current one, had a recommendation, but they couldn't have the funding for a police officer. So what I did is I spent time and I went through line item by line item and found two opportunities in which to find the additional monies to add on the hundred thousand that was there, but not the hundred and eighty that we needed in order to bring on an officer. So that meant some, two things had to change. So it's about tough choices. And where are we going to spend those dollars? And where are we going to use the opportunities? I think we've been blessed and we are fortunate, as long as I've lived here, being from crime prevention in high school to today as the mayor, that we have been blessed to have the after we do, that have did their job in some unique challenging times in this city that we all know about, and that they've always been there to respond. And on the other hand, they've also been there to respond when it need, when it's times that, hey, we have this recession, hey, we have the COVID. And they, as well as other departments, but we're talking specifically about police, but all across the line, they have done that. And so that is where we should have our thanks and appreciation, be mindful of that. Um, so I just want to make that, that statement that, um, you know, it's about, it's going to have to be about looking at the budget then, make some tough choices. And, and where do those dollars go? Because we want to have it long-term and long-lasting. God, the worst thing you want to do is bring someone on and then all of a sudden, what do we do? And again, that's why I brought up the cops about the state funding. As you saw in the report, we used to have three, three through that. We have one. So things can change and affect our staffing component. And we've been fortunate, we've had other opportunities through artichoke jokes, through Tam Fran, now through YouTube, that we've brought forward some officers. But anyway, I, I just want to appreciate the report of, of the chief. And again, yes, he's good at this with the numbers and the presentation, so I appreciate that talent that you have, and I know you do it personally for the most part with help from your team, uh, but I also want to thank the department as a whole. Council member Hamilton?
So, um, uh, uh, thank you, chief, for the presentation. Um, going back, um, to the city manager's statement regarding, um, the, are we able to write the check? And, and, you know, the answer is yes, and where would that, where did that money come from? We would either, you know, be a little bit more in the red in terms of the, um, the, the general fund or, um, or going to measure G. I wouldn't be in favor of going to measure G, uh, even on a temporary basis. But the one thing that I was thinking about is we are in the unfortunate position of having a lot of open positions across, across the organization, um, and difficulty in filling some of those positions. Is it, is it, um, true that some of that, so, some of those positions are budgeted to be, you know, to, to be funded for the, the entirety of this upcoming fiscal year, but in reality, in, in practical reality, likely will not be because we have trouble finding staff for there and it's a new staff for those? And is it, is it possible to? If, I know you can't absolutely rely on it, but from a practical standpoint, it's, it's likely that there would be unused, unused funds for positions that are open. And, you know, could be cobbled together the funding for another officer from that.
Through mayor, uh, thank you, council member Hamilton, uh, uh, for your comments. And sure, we've al, we've already done that. Uh, and so one of the initial budget strategies you do when you have a, a challenging general fund budget, you look at your attrition and you have a budgeted vacancy savings. Uh, we, we certainly know, uh, that we will have attrition throughout the year, we do every year, uh, and so you budget a portion of that vacancy savings actually to, to subsidize your general fund. That's one of the strategies that we implemented in the proposed budget. In addition to add the one, uh, proposed police officer position that is in the budget, uh, we made reductions of, uh, current vacant positions that we know are being recruited but would not be filled on July one. Uh, and so that, um, that strategy has also been implemented. Uh, and so, uh, uh, you, if so directed, we, we can certainly add it, uh, the, the additional position to the, uh, general fund, uh, and, uh, as I mentioned, it will be another hundred and roughly eighteen thousand dollars, and we will, uh, make sure that we adjust in our, uh, uh, future budgets to accommodate that ongoing costs. And, and we do have sufficient general fund balance, uh, to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and, and I know from members of the community that they, you know, it would be like, well, if this project at Sky Park had, i- is in, will that give us the money we need? Do we need to rethink, uh, some projects or activities? So I think that's, that's what I'm talking about with making choices. And so where's our priorities? So, uh, with that said, uh, not seeing any further hands, and so again, thank you, chief, thank you, city manager, for pausing us to just get, um, through that part, and, and I know there's the second part in which you wish to embark upon, so please.
And Mr. Mayor, may I? I did see a, a comment that popped up. Can we, uh, do you want to all can go to public comment just for this portion and then we'll continue?
Well, I, I can read you the, and I, that's why I mentioned, it said, perhaps we should think about cost of Sentinel Park. So that was the, it's in the, uh, question and answer, I hadn't seen that before, but I, I, I like, uh, that suggestion. Thank you, city manager. So why don't we pause also? Uh, but I did want to read that and see if anybody from the community wished to speak on the presentation from the chief as well as the answers that the city manager gave on the prior meeting. Not seeing any hands at this time, then we'll, uh, go back to the city manager. City manager? Can you hear me?
We will re- resume screen here and begin the presentation on the capital budget. Uh, and so this portion of our presentation, uh, is on the proposed capital improvement budget. Uh, uh, as the city, uh, council knows, we talked about our, about our ninety-three projects and, uh, we've taken some time to break those down in an analysis that you haven't, um, uh, received in prior years, but we wanted to break those projects down into, uh, various groups. So those that are in, um, a pre-project, pre-development stage, essentially, uh, we have a number of those, uh, classic example are strategic initiatives. We would like to do X, and we allocate some initial funding to explore it, but it's not yet a full capital improvement project, uh, because we have, uh, yet to identify exactly how much it's going to cost. And then we break down projects that are in the design, the bid stage, execution, and project closeout, and, and so you'll see that. Uh, and so tonight's capital, uh, budget presentation, uh, we will, uh, provide an overview. Uh, we will then have a detailed, uh, project, uh, discussion based on a number of project areas, uh, beginning with water, wastewater, stormwater, uh, then our city net, our, our, our cable apartment, parks, fire, police facilities and streets, and then last technology. And then we will talk about equipment and vehicles, uh, and then, uh, debt service. Just want to, uh, and then take questions and, uh, next steps. I just want to note that your entire department head team is here, uh, with the exception of community services director, Anne Matola, uh, who, uh, is out for this meeting, but I, I will be, uh, providing, uh, a presentation on her portion. So with that, let's, uh, do the, uh, an overview of our proposed budget, and I'll turn it over to our finance director, Chin Yusun.
I'm greeting the mayor and, um, honorable members of the council, Chin Yusun, finance director. So first, let me, I'll give you a, a overview of the CIP budget and stuff. So our CIP budget, um, sorry, I cannot see the numbers because it's, okay. So as always, the CIP project has a lot of carryovers because many of the capital improvement projects last four, not four years, and these will carry over, uh, previous council appropriations. There could be from last fiscal year, could be from earlier, prior fiscal years. For the total carryover appropriation for the next twenty, the next fiscal year is about seventy-seven million dollars. We are, we request a new appropriation of about fifty-eight million dollars. The total twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, CIP budget is a, is combination of the carryover of a prior appropriation and a new request, and the total is about twenty-three-five-nine million dollars. So then usually we budget a CIP project for a horizon of five years, for the upcoming, um, five years, so we're going to look at the CIP budget for about two-hundred-and-eighty-three million dollars. This is a looking at a CIP budget by each fiscal year. As you can tell, the next fiscal year is going to be a hundred and thirty-five, and then going up until the fiscal two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. The total by year, total equates about two-hundred-and-eighty-three million dollars. Um, the city manager talked about ninety, the three projects that we're going to work out for the next fiscal year, and this is the, um, allocation of which, which area of these projects are coming from, and also will be in the public work. With that, I, I'll hand over the presentation to our public res, public works director, Matt Lee.
Good evening again, uh, honorable mayor and members of council. My name is Matt Lee, your public works director. As Director Sun indicated, uh, on the previous slide, uh, there were, um, ten major project areas, and so what we wanted to do, um, you've seen that slide in the past, what we wanted to do, uh, for this presentation is to kind of highlight for all the projects, the ninety-three projects that we're doing this year, uh, what phase that they're currently in. So this, this is actually a snapshot in time of, uh, where we are with the specific projects themselves, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention, uh, the recent departures in the engineering, uh, second decks. Now created a seventy-one percent vacancy rate within the engineering, uh, section that will reverberate throughout the scheduling of some of these projects. Um, but I will say that, you know, with the council approval of the, uh, on-call project management process, uh, as we last reported, uh, there were twenty-three projects on hold. Now there's currently thirteen because we've been moving our way through that. And so we are able to get a couple of projects going. As you can see, uh, on the, uh, X-axis, they, these are the various phases of a project that goes through in time. And so what this slide shows is the portfolio of our CIP and, and where the progress is. Uh, we have projects that are currently on hold, which is about thirteen, then there's ones that are in the planning and feasibility stage where we're generally getting started to work through, and then there's about approximately twenty in design, um, uh, no projects currently underbid, and then there's twenty construction and two in closeout. Uh, the trend line that you see, um, I think that's one thing I wanted to highlight is to kind of give you a sense of where we're going with the projects. Uh, when it's at a negative slope like that, that kind of just indicates we have a lot of projects in the planning phases that we need to kind of get started. Um, if it goes into a positive slope, uh, and it angles the other way, that means we're finishing off a lot of projects. Ideally from, uh, from a CIP perspective, we want to have kind of a horizontal line, as horizontal as possible, so that we can have that pipeline, that delivery pipeline, be able to not be backed up in, in any of the phases, um, because certain staff members work on specific phases, uh, you would have to increase or decrease resources for those phases. And so our goal is really to try to keep a, a steady flow for that. Now, obviously, there are spikes, uh, for a variety of reasons when there is an additional need for CIP projects for a variety of reasons, and, uh, those, for those instances, we try to supplement with consultants. Uh, next slide, please. Yeah, and so, um, uh, this slide is, uh, it's a little hard to read, but really what I'm trying to show is, you know, uh, the staff and the Herculean task that they've done in trying to get as many projects going as possible. Um, I know i- it may feel like we have projects that are just sitting on the books, but, uh, you know, in the previous CIP, I believe there was probably a hundred and fourteen, funded projects. This year we have ninety-three, so we are working through and trying to clear out as many projects as we can. These are the projects that our staff is currently working on, uh, with the supplemental consultants. I wanted to just highlight the projects that are specifically on hold. Uh, as you can see, there's a variety of projects that fall within park, uh, within facilities, parks, streets, wastewater, and water. Some of these projects are not on hold because of resources, but, uh, mainly due to lack of funding as well, uh, where they may have been funded for a specific element or phase, and we could now proceed without any, uh, additional funding. And we'll talk more about that in, uh, later on in the presentation. What I want to highlight next was the new projects. Uh, we, we know that, uh, our, we currently have a lot of projects on hold, and so we're really conscious on starting projects and starting new projects. Uh, the projects that we start that are new specifically, uh, need to be started within this fiscal year for a variety of reasons, and we'll discuss those, um, throughout this presentation. There currently are only four new projects for this current CIP. So, um, in terms of how that breakdown is from a fiscal standpoint, uh, as you, as Director Sun indicated, the current appropriation request is for approximately fifty-eight million dollars. Uh, what we would say is approximately three percent of that is new projects at one-point-five million, and we have an unfunded amount, uh, for the projects that we are actually currently listing at about eleven percent for six-point-eight million, and we have an, an active funded amount of approximately forty-nine million dollars, which is about eighty-five percent of current existing projects that we're moving through the pipeline. Now, keep in mind that twenty-five million of that forty-nine million is for the RAP, uh, it's a fully funded, so it could be completed with construction, uh, by the fall of twenty-twenty-three. Next slide. So, uh, with that, that's the general overview of the CIP and the health of our, progress of our project portfolio. Um, we're going to move into an in-depth discussion of the various CIPs by the ten major project areas that we listed earlier tonight.
I'm sorry, uh, director, can we, can we pause for a moment? Um, what I'd like to do at this time, before we get in the, uh, in-depth discussion on the projects, um, I'd like to ask for a, about a ten-minute recess. Some of the staff and, uh, council have been, um, meeting since four-thirty, just want to give an opportunity, and then we'll come back and so we get in the in-depth discussion, if, uh, if, if that's okay with you, director.
As long as it's okay with you.
Cool, thank you. Um, all right, with that said, colleagues, we are going to, um, take a ten-minute break. I have, uh, eight forty-five currently, if we could be back with cameras on at, uh, eight-fifty-five, I'd appreciate it. Please stay logged in, and we will be in recess. Amen. Amen. Okay. Vice Mayor Mason, and then sit after your back and ready. And we'll go ahead and return from recess and reconvene. We left off with Director Lee on the in-depth discussion of the CIP projects, and I will turn it back over to City Hall to continue. Thank you.
Good evening again. I just wanted to confirm that you guys could see the PowerPoint?
Yes, we can.
All right, so continuing where we dropped off. We're going to go with the in-depth discussions on CIP projects. I want to first start with the major project area of water. As you can see here, we have, looking at the trend line, we do have a lot of projects that we're kind of moving on to get into construction. I wanted to highlight a few projects that are in this current CIP. One of the new projects that we talked about is the water quality well system upgrades and the Sweeney Ridge tank chlorine generator installation. The water quality system upgrades are to help upgrade an outdated system that the supplier, where the supplier does not, no longer manufacture some of the equipment. That's the image that you see on your left. You know, we want to move to a more integrated style that is more automated, that will allow us to create operational simplicity, to allow for remote monitoring of our water system, to ensure safe drinking water as we move forward. Sweeney Ridge is essentially a similar project where they are looking to generate a treatment house through the utilization of salt, so we do not have to move the materials up through Sweeney Ridge as often. It will allow us to bring small materials and generate the treatment on-site. And so that will come at the cost of six-hundred-thousand dollars this year, and that costs us for the implementation of the system itself. Another project that I wanted to kind of highlight for this year, the Acapella Well Project, which is at Commodore Park. That project is moving into, it's anticipated to move into construction at the end of next fiscal year. And so we're budgeting funds for that project as well. And really what I want to highlight for the water major project area are the various programs that we have. We essentially have programs that focus on pump station replacements, and then we have stuff that, programs that focus on tank replacements, and ones that focus on main improvement, main improvement replacements, which are the avenues projects that you guys recently approved. As you can see, as part of the request, pump station, the pump station program itself, we're anticipating going into construction and design for the Sleet Lane and Lake Drive pump stations. And that generally accounts for a majority of the cost for those projects. The tank improvement projects themselves, we are, we have a section of four tanks where we anticipate two of the tanks to enter into construction in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. What we're accounting for here is to just ensure we have that project delivery pipeline available. So this is the start construction of the other two tanks, or sorry, I apologize. To continue and initiate design of the other two tanks, so that when we're done with construction, we'll have other tanks readily available to move into construction. Those two tanks that we're trying to initiate design on is the Commodore Tank and the Princeton Tank. The main improvement program itself, Avenue Three dash two, is to begin design for the next phase of work, and that's what that request is for. Now, moving on to wastewater. Similar to water, we have a lot of projects in planning and design, and we're trying to move those through the process. I want to highlight just pretty much the wastewater programs. Similar to water programs, we have three areas. One is the sewer main, implemented replacement program. Those coincide with the avenues projects. We try to inconvenience the general public as minimally as possible. And so we usually combine those projects with the avenues, with the water main replacement. And so those kind of run in alignment with that. We have a couple of pump station projects that we're working through at the moment, and I think the hundred thousand accounts for just ensuring that we can complete the design and move forward with those. And then the water quality control plant is the treatment plant that we partially own with South San Francisco. There's always a set amount that we set aside for CIP to ensure that the treatment plant functions properly. And our percentage share is, I believe, approximately two-three percent. Next is stormwater. As you can see here, I guess we're doing, the good news is we're doing good because the trend line is generally flat. The not-so-good news is we actually don't have funding for the additional stormwater projects. The two stormwater projects that I highlight here are generally ones that come from grant funds or federal funds that we're able to move forward with. The regional stormwater capture project is not yet fully funded, but there is appropriation from various funding sources to help us move along through the planning phase. The Spieglass Drive Storm Drain Improvement Project is in the process of moving through construction. Those are pre-mo-funded, pre-mo-funded funds for the Spieglass Drive Storm Drain issue. Moving next on to facilities, this is one of the good ones that I always like to look at when the trend is going up in the trend line. It shows that we're kind of pushing projects through. We have currently seven in construction, and we're anticipating of trying to move more projects along. As we know with our facilities, the major project is the Recreation Aquatic Center. That's the RAP, that's approximately twenty-three million dollars that I was talking about that is part of this current year appropriation. These are often, these ones are authorized previously by council, but we're just through the CIP budget, making sure we have the appropriate allocations for it in the budget book. So for the facilities programs themselves, this is the, these are the programs that we're currently looking to fund this year, the fire station fifty-one reconditioning program. We have some of the oldest fire stations in the county, and our facilities are not far behind. So the senior center facility maintenance program is also another one that we're working on. One of the good things is recently this past week, you know, just in time for the heat wave, we were able to replace that chiller, as you guys recalled, that failed, and we had to replace it on an emergency basis. We were able to get those all lined up and to get the chiller working in time at the senior center. Now, there's two projects here that I wanted to kind of highlight. As you can see in the new requests, the dollar amounts are grayed out. Those are the ones that are actually unfunded at the moment, they're funded with unfunded funds. And so, you know, the library code compliance upgrade program is one. There's a couple of things that need to be replaced at the library due to code compliance. And there is also the City Hall maintenance program that is also unfunded. For these programs, the City Hall maintenance facility, as you can see, the projected cost through twenty-six, twenty-seven on the furthest right-hand call is eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which seems a lot higher than all the other facilities themselves. And maybe you're asking yourself, why is that? Well, there's a couple of reasons. A couple of these facilities have already received maintenance repairs, right? The library code compliance program has made some initial repairs, and there's the senior facility center has made upgrades to the chillers. The City Hall facility itself has not had any upgrades to the roof, or sorry, repairs to the roof, or to the HVAC system on the roof. Generally, the large cost is based on the square footage of the building itself, which is much larger than a lot of our other facilities, square footage-wise, which means the roof is a significant amount. And on the City Hall roof themselves, there's thirteen unique HVAC units on there. So it's not one HVAC unit, there's multiple zones for such a large area. You know, systematically, in order to be, to work through those, a quick cost alone, I believe, is about five thousand dollars apiece. And so, you know, there's been thought process of like, maybe we could phase them, we could be more prudent, but generally when you're replacing the roof and the HVAC units, you kind of have to do them all at once. There's also the cost of bringing in the crane. If we do it in multiple multiizations, it's not really physically prudent to do that. And so those are the things we're generally looking at. Now, with these unfunded funds, we were able to identify other projects this current year that may not be moving forward, so we were going to reallocate some of the funds to these two unfunded projects, and we look to do that in the next budget, the updated adopted budget that's going to go to council for review. Next is the streets projects. We're generally moving along in streets. It's a combination of projects that are funded locally and through grants. Some of the projects that we kind of generally want to highlight that we will be working on is the Crystal Springs Road Utility Undergrounding Project. Those are ones we're looking to get started with PG&E, and we're looking to utilize the Rule Twenty credits to move forward. We're in discussions with them to see when we can initiate that. The Scott Street grade separation, as discussed earlier in the evening by Mayor Medina, that's the local match funding that we need to help with the planning phase. There's also the ADA congestion ramps at various locations. That's part of our ADA transition plan. We allocate generally about a thousand a year to ensure that we can continually move on, move on upgrading on our curb ramps throughout the city. And then there's the Transit Quarter Protection Connection Project, where there is a bulb out that needs to be built at a curb extension at San Bruno in Green with retro-reflective flashing beacons. And so that's what that eighty thousand dollar cost is for there. In terms of the programs that we have for streets, I want to just point you to the top row, the pavement management program and the new request. I think we've heard the community loud and clear through Measure G and everything else. What we're going to do is paving, paving, paving. There's about seven-point-nine million dollars allocated to a slurry-sill project and a rehabilitation program. We also have the sidewalk repair program. We recently just completed one, that program. And we're looking to institute a new phase of that program for the next upcoming year. And so that's also a new project. And then there's also the congestion safety and traffic calming program that we utilize these ones as part of TSBC to initiate studies and implement things that is approved by the transportation, by TSBC. The traffic signal rehabilitation program, there's a small forty thousand dollar amount. Our traffic signal infrastructure is aging. There are certain components that are not replaceable. And so what we're going to do is take an evaluation, to initiate evaluation, and see what may need to be upgraded as part of our signal systems, to ensure that they're properly functioning. And with that, that concludes my components for the major project areas. And with that, that concludes my components for the major project areas. I'll hand this off to Director Krishna Murthy for his CIP projects.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Sandeep Krishna Multy. I'm the Director of San Bruno City Net Services, here to talk about City Net and Technology CIPs. The next slide, please. We basically just have one project and it's in construction. In fact, it's close to being to fruition. And that one project is a channel one upgrade, which the council was gracious enough to fund using ARPA funds last year. And the original ask was two hundred and fifty thousand. We have a takeover of, and the projected cost through twenty-six, twenty-seven is slated to be exactly that, two hundred and fifty thousand. This cost accommodates the upgrade of the channel from standard definition to high-definition telecast. And the stage we are at currently is we are going to have our first test of the high-definition fee this coming Friday at the senior center. And we should be in a position to go forward with the telecast a few weeks from now. When I say we're going to have the first test, it's our programming manager who's put the equipment together and it's all our staff at City Net Services who's going to make the daisy chain that links the telecast that would be happening at the senior center in hybrid format to carry through new fiber lines to our rack at three-nine-eight del Camino Real and then on to the head end at one-forty Arbor Court. So that's what's being tested this weekend. The equipment's already in-house and ready to be deployed. Next slide, please. The unfunded project we have is a big one for us with the conversion of the eighty-three percent of the system that's not currently under fiber into a hundred percent fiber system wide. And the pilot project we have just completed in the Marisol neighborhood, we have recently started doing installs. This comprises pulling fiber through underground conduit that was previously available to about hundred and fifteen single-family homes. We currently have an offer available in this neighborhood of two months of free service to any signups and we are getting quite a number of calls for those signups. A few details about the fiber to home citywide project. Back in two thousand nineteen, when the first presentation on the project was made to the council, the cost estimated was twelve point four million dollars. And the project involves the replacement of all outside wiring with fiber optic cable and then removal of old electronics, installation of new electronics in its place and advanced technology services to be provided for this new fiber, which primarily would comprise one gigabit internet connectivity to homes across San Bruno. So this project, just to underscore, the earlier point remains unfunded. And the backdrop or the backdrop to an assessment of this project is currently underway. A consultant has been engaged to carry out an assessment of the City Net enterprise and the reports are due by the end of this month. On the technology side, which involves the information technology department, we have three projects in the planning and feasibility stage. We have two in construction and we have one in closeout. The next slide. Thank you. The first of these projects for technology involves a software needs assessment upgrade. We are carrying forward an amount of ninety-four thousand, seven hundred dollars, having not used it in the previous year. The second project, which is currently in or very close to completion, is the replacement of the city phones. The city manager, which is the term used for the, the server that manages the city's phone system, is on an old, on an old version of Cisco and that needs to be upgraded to a new cloud-based as well as high on-premise version, which would accommodate the needs of the city going forward. The replacement has been identified. The phones are currently in shipment to the city and the servers that need to be set up at the back end are being set up. The online permit, if you'll go back here, thank you. Online permit system upgrade. We are currently in the process of transitioning from the full suite of E-racket over to a new system called the My Government Online System, MGO. And the new request in twenty-two, twenty-three is for fifty thousand dollars. This adds to the hundred and seventy from the prior appropriation and the projected cost of twenty-six, twenty-seven is estimated at three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. EOC equipment upgrade, again, it is in process. The equipment's being installed. The EOC facility itself is undergoing quite a serious upgrade in terms of connectivity and facilitation for EOC operation should the need arise at any point in the near or longer-term future. Disaster recovery, we have already spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on installing a new disaster recovery system and we have a new request for a hundred thousand dollars with about three hundred and fifty thousand projected through twenty-six, twenty-seven. This aspect of operations is in ongoing need for the city and will require frequent reinforcement of existing infrastructure to accommodate growing needs, which we had, it's been happening over the years. The ERP upgrade, we had previously asked for two hundred thousand. Current ERP system in use at the city is called Eden and it's from a company called Tyler Munis. This system is projected to go, to reach its end of support and end of life by twenty-six, twenty-seven per recent announcements from the company. However, there is a likelihood that the timeline might move. To accommodate the potential timeline moving upon us, we have undertaken an assessment of participating in a multi-agency format to secure a subscription to a new ERP platform. Primarily for this reason, we are asking for the council to accommodate a new request for a million dollars in the coming fiscal year. And this is, while this may not end up being used, it's to have as a backstop in case the need arises for the city to move quickly to replace its existing ERP system and move to a new platform potentially on a multi-agency use form. The projected cost twenty-six, twenty-seven, we are estimating at two million dollars at this time. Next slide. Unfunded projects in IT, application infrastructure upgrade. We have yet to complete assessments of what's needed going forward and what's coming down the technology pipeline for the city itself. As and when we have details, we'll be coming, we will be coming back to the council and making requests that are appropriate within the context of budget and timing. Citywide software upgrade, the need does remain for the city to have its own data warehouse and also BI, which stands for business intelligence and reporting. These we have not addressed in the current CIP. This brings me to the end of the CIP projects for City Net and for IT. Happy to answer any questions.
And thank you, Director Krishna Murthy. I just want to back up really quick to the ERP upgrade because I know that two million dollars is a, is a large figure, but it's, the council should know that it is in line with the cost to replace those systems. But I also want to remind council that last year during our budgeting process, the only way that we actually have the ability to fund this project is that the council reserved a portion of the ARPA funds to pay for this project. So remember the total, I think it was roughly eight million dollars that we received from ARPA. We had a long-range funding plan for those ARPA funds and two million of those ARPA funds were set aside for the ERP upgrade. So that's where this million dollars would come from. It is not our, our general facility, our reserve account. And not seen any hands, continue on, looking at the mayor. Shall we continue? Okay. I am not Ann Makola, the Director of the Community Services Department, but I will provide her slides. This is the path for our capital improvement projects within the Parks Department, so three are on hold and two are in the feasibility stage, and we will talk about those here. And so Beckner Shelter, prior appropriation in last year's budget of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that, that's actually for the roadway leading to Beckner Shelter. I think you all know the pothole ridden roadway that leads to Beckner Shelter. So council allocated funds for that project and we will be moving forward with that. Likely timed with other paving projects to achieve economies of scale. Florida Park Avenue, as council knows, that project, while there was a prior appropriation for a number of design and improvements for building on a full park and then a greening allocation because just before the pandemic, we were actually, actually, and at this point, I can't remember if it was just before the pandemic or just after the pandemic, but we were able to open a, open a greening of Florida Park Ave, a park and take away the temporary fencing, but the large vision remains unfunded. And so until we secure sufficient funding for that park, we will continue. As the council knows, we have applied for grants, but unfortunately, as have been unsuccessful. Park Pathways Project, this is a project that has had significant funding in the past and the new allocation is really just a small delta allocated to finish the Pacific Heights Park and finish the pathways in Pacific Heights Park. Polley Park at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is really just a recognition of the grant funds that we received from the county as well as a reappropriation of local city funds. The initial pot was coming from parking loop funds, but due to a reimbursement that we had to provide a development project, those parking loop funds are no longer available and so they're reappropriation from the city facilities reserve account, just to ensure that that project is slowly forward and will move forward now that we have received from the county of a grant of two hundred thousand dollars. And then there's a citywide baseball lighting and fencing upgrade of underfunded at two million dollars. We have applied for grants for this and have not yet received word of any funding, but we will continue to look toward opportunities to fund this. And so that encapsulates the park projects that are active and moving forward and those that are unfunded. Worth noting, sort of putting back on my city manager's hat, that I know the council knows that we are only representing the projects that are in this year's CIP. There are a whole host of other unfunded projects that, that we're not discussing. And so the next CIP section, not seeing any questions and looking at the mayor for confirmation, we will proceed on to Fire Two Fire Delay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Delay. Looks like we have a hand there.
Oh, you know, one Medina says go, another Medina says pause. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor Medina. The question I have for the city manager is, is of those projects that you referred to that we don't have the funding for, what, maybe, not tonight, but maybe we can get a list of what those are, just so that we're, we have clarity on the scale and the number of projects.
Sure.
Thank you.
Just really quickly to respond to that, we, we have a list of, of unfunded projects. The honest answer is that it is not complete because as a city, we have not undertaken a full facility assessment. We do intend to have that discussion with the city council in the upcoming year and as the city council knows, we will, we are expecting to be in receipt of significant one-time funds from the YouTube project, both in community impact fees and, and community benefits and so.
Hey guys, I'm here to be quiet.
As, as we begin to prioritize those funds, undertaking a comprehensive facility, citywide facility assessment, so we both have a, a good understanding of the known knowns, also the known unknowns. And what I mean by that is we, we know that we have subterranean sprinkler infrastructure, for example, that is in need of repair and that is aging, but we have no idea how much that is going to cost because we have, have yet to undertake that assessment. So know that that work is ongoing, we can provide you with, with what we have, but it is very much incomplete. Chief Delay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Members of council, I delay your fire chief. And if I could have the next slide, I'll be here to present this evening, our two CIP issues for the fire department. We can just, this is the phasing again, that the public works director. Give me just one moment, I'm going to turn this noise down for you. Okay, so we have for the fire department, we have two CIP projects for this year that are ongoing. First one would be the Crestmore Canyon Wildfire Mitigation Project. Our prior appropriations of one point nine, five million dollars is going to be continued in this year. We have no additional appropriations for this year, but we do have the citywide wildfire mitigation that we have approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of new appropriations for this year. And the total, two point one million dollars of appropriations, and we've just carried over that one fifty for this year, for this current citywide wildfire mitigation effort and for a total of four point one projected through the total length of the CIP. If I could move on to the next slide. It looks like it's wrapped up there for the two slides.
We will turn, if there are no questions, Mayor, we'll turn the presentation over to Ryan Johansson, our police chief.
Seeing no hands as well, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Once again, Ryan Johansson, your chief of police, present on just a couple of CIP projects that are open for the police department. Next slide, please. In terms of status of the three current CIP projects of the police department, all of them sit in the planning and feasibility phase at this point in time. The three projects are the radio system replacement project. There was a prior appropriation of four hundred and forty-eight thousand. This radio system replacement project is remaining open because we anticipate, as I have reported to council previously, the need to move forward with some radio encryption work over the coming years. And so we will be wrapping up the current phases of this project and then looking to potentially keep it open and extend it for that project in the immediate future. And the second is the dispatch records ergonomic update. This is a project that was initiated a number of years ago in order to improve our dispatch center. You can see a picture there of some of the improvements that have been made. This is actually a bit of an old photo and there have been substantial improvements made since then. Hundred and fifty thousand dollar prior appropriation, projected cost through the next year remains at that one hundred and fifty thousand. And finally, the downtown parking program, which I have also reported on independently to council, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar prior appropriation, a hundred and six thousand of new requests here in twenty-two, twenty-three, project cost through twenty-six, twenty-seven of six hundred and fifty-two thousand to get the downtown parking program up and running, including the metering as well as the ALPR based enforcement, as we have discussed in the past. And that is where the police department sits with it, with its three CIPs.
Thank you, chief. Any questions?
Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, I have just one quick question.
Oh, yes, please. Councilmember Hamilton, thank you.
Thank you, chief. The downtown parking program, given, given the, the updates you've get, you've provided on this project, it seems like it's further along. It's, it wouldn't be considered to be in design at this point?
I think because we're still in the phase of needing to acquire bids and determine who the vendor will be and we still have some policy items to bring to council is why it still sits in that planning phase.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, we'll move on to equipment and vehicles, please.
Councilmember, the mayor, here is me again, from the front end, Director O. I'll carry on, finish the last few slides for the presentation. So today's presentation is, covers a little bit more than just CIP. We have some lingering parts of our budget. One is the equipment and then vehicles. We have an equipment reserve fund. Mostly we use for general fund only and then to use to fund for high equipment, furniture and fixtures and vehicles. Prior to twenty-twenty-one, three hundred and forty thousand dollars, the elevated annual fund department, but postponed this year. $340,000 of the elevated annual fund department, but postponed this year, closer time. If you remember, postponed for the year of 2021, and then we, because last, last year, we had a forecast of shortfall in the general fund budget, we just, we didn't do that. And this year, even though we have a little more fund balance, but we have concerns, and as I had described in the last, last session, that we may have to set up a reserve for some of the review we see from CPFA. So we're not proposing to have equipment reserve allocation from all the other departments. Probably that's some discussion we can have when we receive the YouTube, community benefit payment. But that will be a discussion department will have with the city manager and the other residents of the council. Based on all the requests, we have a forecast, the reserve balance will be up 2.6 million by the end of fiscal year 2022. Okay. The strategy of the equipment reserve, stuff usually discussed with council on replenishment and future spending after receiving community benefit payment. Oh, that's what I talk about, YouTube benefit payment. And then we have separate accounts for equipment, furniture, and then vehicles. And then we will develop a complete inventory and consider additional funding for the equipment replacement. Next slide, please. Here you look at the equipment replacement fund, the request for the general, for next fiscal year. This page covers the entire general fund, and there will be three market police vehicles and two unmarked police vehicles. And police department also asks for hard shield, armored encampments, and then ballistic helmets for police officers. These, those are, and then we also have obtained with some recommendation from the management committee to provide emergency response vehicle and updating for by department at $60,000. Street needs some service trucks, and then the park needs inspectors vehicle. And there's two items on the bottom there, John Deere zero terminal and a more trailer, these add up to $23,000. I want to point it out to the council that these items were actually approved in the last, this last budget session, that's actually, they were approved for two for purchase for the fiscal year 2021, 22. The reason department request them again is because there is a supply shortage. We were not able to, able to order this more and more trailer so that the funds are not able, we are not able to cover the funds, and therefore additionally. So it's kind of a fresh request, so it's not a re- you have already approved this request last year, which is added to the budget because the finance department operation issue, process specifically applicable to the situation like that. The next page is about the enterprise funds request, you know, all the water, wastewater, storm, they have vehicles, they need to have, they are on a replacement schedule, so we're requesting some replacement for the vehicles. All in all, equipment replacement is about $105,000. We have just shy of a million dollar for vehicle replacements, and then your request is only for the by department emergency vehicle for $60,000. So calls here for vehicle and then equipment replacement, if I have any questions at this time.
Questions from colleagues? I, I just had one. There are obviously separate accounts for the, as you indicated, for the equipment, furniture, and vehicles. And I know I brought this up, this is some years ago, and I just don't recall when, but when was the, if you could check, not now, when the last time it was audited? Because obviously, what I had, what I saw last time was things did on the books, they were being accrued for, but yet they really weren't in service or they weren't really in, within our possession any longer, you know, due to age or being circulated out. So if that could just be checked back, when was the last time we did it? And that's, that's it now for a later time.
Okay. Mayor Medina, may I provide a quick response to that question? Because there will be audited, audited again in the proposed fleet and equipment utilization study that holds in the budget. And so that will take a deep dive look at the city's equipment reserve and both confirm and refresh how much is allocated for each vehicle and how much we should be setting aside. It will also take a holistic look at our fleet and determine had there been fleet creep, where there's vehicles that should have been retired that were not retired, and give, provide a new assessment of how many vehicles we need within our fleet. With regard to the question of a allocation in the fleet reserve between vehicles and equipment, there's not such a, it is not segregated by fund. Other cities do have separate funds for vehicles, furniture, and equipment. We do not. We have one fund for all citywide equipment, including vehicles. One of the recommendations we will be providing, once there are sufficient funds, is to segregate the funds and have what's often called a FFD, fixtures, furniture, and equipment fund, because while one chair may only be a hundred dollars, when you have thousands of chairs, it's quite a sum, and so you should be setting aside discreetly for all your soft assets like that. And so we'll, we'll talk about that further, both through the fleet study and through our citywide asset study.
Yes, and, and thank you, and I understand that, that it's in one and you want to separate, which I think is right. But also just that we're auditing all of those items, and that's all, that's all, when the last time. Thank you. Okay, and other questions from colleagues at this time? Proceed, please.
So the last section of my presentation is regarding our debt service. The city generally has very low debt portfolio, debt holding. The debt policy was adopted by the council in October 2017. We only, the city went issues debt, one is economic efficient, then the debt issuance usually needs to integrate with the capital improvement plan. And we normally consider refinancing with the debt servicing greater than 3% of private value. We haven't really done any refunding in recent, in the last two years, as I could remember. As we all know, interest rate has been on the rise, so right now, it's already the time to refund any debt outstanding. So we have, actually, the city has five debt assets. These are the new recent debt from 2017 and 2018 and 2019. Those, those three are mostly bonds. And the city is clearly rating, that's for geo debt, is a AAA rated. That's mainly because we have very low debt, debt burden for the city. Next slide, please. And these are just looking at the, the debt matrix for, for the citywide. The debt level, we're actually, per capita debt level is on the rise, but technically is not, we have any more debt, only because of the, the population in San Bruno, city San Bruno is decreasing. That's why we're seeing the per capital, per capita debt level is going up. But because of the house, housing, property values are on the rise, that's right, but in terms of debt to market value of us, that property is down for 223. And debt service burden certainly has been reducing because we have not issued any new debt. The debt has been paid off gradually at, every year, so we definitely see the trending of the debt burden going to decrease over the time until the city decides to issue new debt. We are amortizing all the debt as within the city's guideline, and debt service coverage also, the debt service coverage for both water and wastewater enterprise has gone down. The only reason is that debt service coverage is a, is a ratio of debt burden in term, in terms of the revenue. We have forecasted a lower revenue for water and both water and wastewater enterprise in the upcoming fiscal year because of the concerns of the drought here. So that's why you see the annual debt, revenue over debt service goes down. But all in all, I think the city's debt situation is, is very good. We are still holding very low debt burden, and all metrics are favorable going to, as compared to the target. So with that, that ends up my presentation, and that's the final part of our budget presentation, and then we'll, this is your council's discussion for the guidance for our next steps.
Thank you very much for all the presentations and information. And at this time, why don't, what I'd like to do, due to the hour, is see if there's any members of the public that wanted to make any comments or ask questions, since at this time, if they needed to depart, let's give them that opportunity. So at this time, if there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak, any of the items or presentations that you've seen this evening, now would be the time at which to raise your hand, please.
No hands are raised.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to city council to see if there are any additional questions or comments.
There was an item entered into the Q and A. I don't know if we want to address that. It was related to fiber.
Yeah, I've gotten another council member, let me know, and I've notified the city manager of the question. It's in the Q and A, which is, I don't know if it's seen, but it was a fiber question specifically, something results or something. Did we want to address it, staff, or?
Sorry, Mayor, I did not know that that was requested addressing. Yeah, so the question was, can the city obtain an outside investor for city net services? We, we have looked into opportunities to fund the fiber to the home project. We'll talk about that with the city council. When you receive the full consultant's report that as the director mentioned, you'll receive at the conclusion of this month. And so I think all options to, to fund that will be talked about in it, so I'll, I'll just reserve that for that time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mason?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Mike, the first, the first is a comment, just thanking everybody, especially any director, and I know Howan, Howan has been working really hard on the street paving plan. So I am so excited, I think as everybody else is, to see our funds being used to, you know, really redo our streets. And I think those who live on the streets can't wait to see that change. So thank you to everybody who worked on that to really prioritize using the Measure G funds and other funds to make sure that our streets are improved. I think the next question I had was to, I think it would be the city manager. It's kind of, it's a broader question, but in this budget, what would you say is the biggest investment that's going to the library?
City manager?
Through the mayor, thank you, Vice Mayor Mason, for that question. I would say really two-fold and operating in capital. One is this for budget, this budget would, like say, full restoration of library services and library operating hours in their part-time budget that was reduced during the pandemic. With regard to capital expenditures, as the Public Works Director mentioned, we will be bringing a modified allocation, not increasing the overall cost of the capital budget, but reducing one project that we know is sufficiently funded and funding at $50,000 for code compliance for the library. Know that we are also looking at additional self kiosk and checkout machines for the library, and we will be assessing that during the fiscal year. And should it seem like we can execute, we will bring that forward to the city council during the fiscal year or at the next budget session.
You can, you can check out your own books now. What would, what would be the new kiosks?
There, there's a need to upgrade those kiosks and have additional IT upgrades at the library. They were not included in the proposed budget due to the analysis around a potential infrastructure bond. But since it looks like we will not be proceeding with that, we will go back and do an assessment on what capital improvements will be needed in the short term.
Okay. And then just kind of following up on the library, so does that mean, when you say going back to regular hours, does that mean that the regular activities will be coming back soon? I know pre-COVID, the events were full. I mean, it's one of the only opportunities for families who may not have funds to really enjoy quality programming. And so I really appreciate the work that the library did this weekend around Juneteenth, the work the library's been doing partnering with Arts and Culture Committee. But they also used to have, like, regular events downstairs in the basement, like magicians. They had little mannequin shows. They had a number of activities. And I'm wondering, when those are going to go back to regular programming?
And so that is a very, very broad question, Vice Mayor Medina, and I want to be careful not to give a broad and sweet answer. And so, yes, the budget includes full funding restoration for both full-time and part-time staff, and we anticipate returning to full-time hours. And we do anticipate returning to more in-person programs. I think one of the things that we've all realized in society, but certainly our library has realized, is that their virtual programming was quite successful. And I do think that they will be doing a deep program analysis and deciding, you know, what programs come back as they were pre-COVID, and what programs that they continue in hybrid, and some of the new programs that they started during COVID may continue in a hybrid or modified fashion. And so I don't want to give a broad, sweet answer that everything will be back as it was, because the honest answer is it probably won't be. But I do think that our wonderful library staff will strive to have programming that is high quality, fits within the budget and meets the needs of the community as best as we can.
Yeah, so I just want to say to that, I'm only one council member, but I hope we don't stick with pipe bread when it comes to quality programming. I think that you can have quality programming, maybe with, you know, storytelling, which to be fair, was always done by library even pre-COVID on Channel One at like 8:00 AM and 7:00 AM every morning. They read, they read a book, a face to put it on for kids when they were little. So we've always had that in a non-Zoom format. But there is a huge benefit of going in person and actually seeing a performance. So I would highly advocate towards moving back to that. And if there is a budget need for it, I'd like to see that at the end of the month in the budget, and hopefully there's support from council, because in comparison to what we've heard tonight, I don't think the funds would be significantly more to ensure that there's quality programming starting, you know, in the new fiscal year, if it, if it doesn't start sooner. The other question I had was around just activities, the Parks and Services or Community Services Department threw a wonderful event recently in the Community Day. Director Matola is definitely to be lauded for her efforts. I think it was a phenomenal day in downtown. So I also wanted to ask whether there's any budget, any budget being placed or set aside for Sunday Streets. That was one of the initiatives that we had put forth, and I didn't hear about that. So I just didn't know if it's because it's within the city measure's discretion or whether there's any plans to move that forward.
Again, thank you, Vice Mayor. That, weekend programming in downtown is certainly a strategic initiative of the city council, and I think we last provided our early update to the city council on strategic initiative on May 10th. That remains a unfunded program, as well as a program that the organization does not have the resources to begin right now. What the department has done, as emblematic of the Community Day reactivation, is as we have community programs, look for opportunities to have those downtown and create some vibrancy downtown. I think the desire to have weekend street closures, as well as more programmatic things, be it a farmer's market or wine stroll, would certainly be wonderful in our, in our downtown. The honest answer is, we're not staffed for that right now, nor do we have the financial wherewithal to put it on. And so that, that is currently not within the budget. In addition, cities oftentimes have those sort of reoccurring programs, have a strong partnership with the Chamber of Commerce or Downtown Business Association. And I know there's been conversations about working with those organizations and reactivating that, and we certainly will. But, but while Director Matola has not- partnership with the Chamber of Commerce or Downtown Business Association. And I know there's been conversations about working with those organizations and reactivating that, and we certainly will. But while Director Matola is not here, I will provide a little articulation of a conversation we just had, which was, Community Day was amazingly wonderful. I think all that were there really enjoyed the reactivation and the businesses really enjoyed it. You know, after that, I knew that I would get some version of this request of can we have more events downtown? And I said, can we move movies in the park or concerts in the park downtown? And we agreed. And we had a really good discussion on the level of effort that it takes to really do quality programming. And I actually followed it up with a conversation, looking at the resources that they have and what their work program is. And the honest answer is that department with the staffing they have, and this next year needs to be laser-focused on making sure that we open our aquatic and recreation center with a bang, imply their time and the resources toward ensuring that we both plan for that facility, staff that facility, and have programming for that facility. And with their limited resources, I think we should be very cognizant on the additional programming that we task that unit with this year, knowing that based on our staffing level, it's really, the direction of it is really top-heavy in the organization.
I think that it was going to tie back to the other strategic initiative, which was to have an incentive program to attract businesses downtown. And it sounds like that's not going to be a possibility this year.
Well, I wouldn't say that responding to that question. That program is actually not led by our Community Services organ. That program really needs to be led by our Economic Development Program that is really for our small and mid-sized businesses is in its infancy. And we have had significant conversations on partnering with Bay Rack, the Bay Area Entrepreneurship Center that is in downtown. And they recently hired new executive director. And just yesterday, there was an email communication between me and the director, or the director to me, about now that that executive director has been selected and will join to really begin our conversations on how to really leverage Bay Rack as a, as a resource in our downtown for, for economic development and those programs that you mentioned. And I will note just on that conversation that during COVID, we were successful in leveraging Bay Rack as an organization that provided grants to businesses. So, you know, should we develop a program or be able to provide funding? Initially, we would, I believe, look to Bay Rack to be our partner to really administer that grant program. They were wonderfully set up for during COVID and I think would be a great partnership.
And I'm sorry, just want, again, one more question that's not related to these questions, but just a comment before I go to that. You know, it would be, I think it would be great at the end of the month to see some kind of commitment to some funds that are going towards our downtown. I don't think it's a secret that I've been really disappointed that the Community Foundation has yet to put anything in writing that they're committing to our downtown or committing to any funds in our downtown. And it would be really ideal for the city to commit some funds for something downtown, whether it be an event, an art project, something along those lines. Because right now, there's nothing that is clearly associated or dedicated to our downtown. The last question I just wanted to ask was just around the Rollingwood lights. Can you just talk a little bit about the investment in Rollingwood this next year from our budget?
That mute button is a killer sometimes. Again, through the mayor, Vice Mayor Mason, I think I want to take two questions. One is an investment in our downtown in our budget. I think it's worth noting that there is significant investment in active projects in our downtown. One is Polzy Park, which is a City Council strategic initiative and an active project that is partially funded. And as we discussed, we'll need additional funds. And we've talked about both looking for city funds for that project as well as looking toward the Community Foundation. And when they presented to council on Tuesday, May 31st, they expressed a willingness to receive a grant for that and look at that dutifully. There's also Polzy Park that we talked about tonight, $575,000 for downtown Polzy Park, directed by the City Council and in your strategic initiatives. $200,000 grant from the county, 375 allocated from city funds. In addition, there's a downtown parking meter project that is a significant endeavor to both improve, introduce demand pricing and improve the availability of parking and push cars to our surface parking lots. And I think we all know that if you go downtown during the heart of the day on the weekend, there are often times where every on- street space is full, but there is space in the parking lots. And so there are two projects that the City Council has directed, the parking meter project as well as the signage, and both of those projects are anticipated to move forward in the next fiscal year. And so I do think based on the resources that we have and our ability to execute, there are significant projects downtown. And I will also say that we did a reactivation of Community Day this year, and next year around this time, we will still be under construction of the rack, and we are anticipating having Community Day downtown next year as well. And so that's with respect to downtown. With respect to the streetlights at Rollingwood, just for members of the public that may not have a background in what is going on, the city has a aging streetlight network that is almost called a R or a regulated output circuit. And periodically, the streetlights fill. And we've had a number of occurrences over the last six or seven years where streetlights have been out for 30 days plus. We recently had an outage in the Rollingwood neighborhood where streetlights were out on two different occasions for an extended period of time, I think two weeks plus. The city, we did take a urgent item to the City Council to allocate initial funds to begin scoping a design replacement of that project. That is an active project that is underway in the scoping and phase. We are looking at, based on council direction, both a, let's call it a normal streetlight system where the streetlights are connected to the electrical grid, as well as a system where there are solar lights. And we are partnering with PGME for utilizing some of their resources and research capability on solar lights. And so that project is moving forward in the feasibility stage. However, it's worth noting that the overall aim for that project is unfunded. And so that is one of the projects that we will be talking about when we receive the U2 community benefit funds or the development impact fees, as they very much need to seek the improvement.
So I think it's the other council members have, you know, they're going to have their comments too. But I would just ask, given that this community was without lights for such a long time, that we really should prioritize this, not as something where we have to find money, but where we budget for it because it's an emergency. And so where that money would be taken from, I think is maybe a conversation to be had internally, and then maybe a recommendation brought back to us. But I think that that's a very serious issue. I don't want to wait for funds to come. Hopefully, we can start addressing it and get ahead of the situation.
Sure. Vice Mayor Mason, I just want to remind council that the estimated cost of that project was $10 million. And so the statement that we don't want to wait until we receive funds allocated, right now, we do not have the resources to move forward with that project. We really, we too wait upon the receipt of development impact fees and community benefit funds from projects that the City Council have already approved and are underway. Because right now, we do not have the funds to begin construction of that project. Now, the funds we do have, council has allocated design funds for that project in the amount of $500,000. So council did take that action this year. And so that project is moving forward in the feasibility and then the design phase. So know that we are moving forward on that. And it is a critical need and an emergency, but we need to get it fully designed. And hopefully, by the time we have it fully designed, we are in receipt of the funds to begin construction.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Medina.
All right, mute is off. Nice. Couple comments and a couple questions. I do support understanding the scope and cost of restoring the programming, the library programming that Vice Mayor Mason expressed. Be interesting to know how much that is that we're talking about. Don't need to know. I'm also interested in knowing as it's getting, the cost for Community Day, what that, what that fully costs and how much funding it, that we appreciated funding from the San Bruno Community Foundation to have Community Day downtown. And one thing I could have find, and as we're looking for ways to potentially fund an additional police officer, is are we anticipating any short-term rental income this upcoming year? I think that, but anyhow, those are the three things that I'm thinking about for the time being. So there they are.
Sure. Mayor Medina, through mayor response to Councilmember Medina's question. With regard to short-term rental, yes, we have budgeted approximately $150,000 within the general fund for the short-term rental revenue. And so that, those funds are already accounted for and included in the revenues and expenditures. With regard to the additional library program, I would ask for additional clarification because there are funds allocated in the budget for restoration of the library staffing budget, so that they, and programming budget. And so with regard to a request for additional programming, I'm not sure that we look toward the pre-COVID funding. There is a additional allocation that we would recommend. I think if the City Council desires additional library programming, we can certainly look into that. Our ability to develop that and bring that forward by the next year, by the June 23rd meeting, we can discuss. Sort of multitasking right now, but I'm also pulling up our presentation from the last meeting on May 31st, where the Director Matola noted that in the allocations in the proposed budget, there was a full restoration of the part-time funding to pre-COVID levels of service hours for full-time operations. And so we will certainly, we have included the funds for restoration of our part-time hours, which will allow us to do those pre-COVID programmings. But as I mentioned, what those programs look like, I certainly understand the desire to have more in-person programs. I think our library staff desires that. I just wanted to clarify that it may not look exactly like it looked pre-COVID. You know, some programs that were new, that were started hybrid may continue, and some programs that were only in-person may continue in a hybrid fashion. But we certainly understand council's request and know that we've included funds for a full restoration of the part-time hours, which will allow us to do that in-person programming that we used to do.
Thank you. The last one was the Community Day cost, right?
Yes. Mayor Medina, we will get that cost to you. Oh, God, did I do that? I said Mayor Medina. Well, there is a Mayor Medina, but council.
He's right, he's right.
We will get that cost for you and the council by the next meet on June 28th.
That's good enough. Thank you very much, and it was really fantastic.
Other questions, comments from colleagues? If not, anything else, city manager?
No, council. I just want to thank you for the time, the questions. This concludes our structured budget presentations. So we're able to get through it in two meetings, again, Tuesday, May 31st and tonight. And thank you very much.
Thank you, city manager, and thank you, staff. Now we'll move on to item number eight, comments from council members. I'll look around the room once, see for any hands, and then I'm going to say that's it. I see two. Mr. Hamilton, Councilmember Hamilton, and then Vice Mayor Mason, please.
I'm the only one who doesn't get called Medina occasionally.
We can, we can.
It's an honor. It is an honor. Waiting for it. So I just had a few, a few quick comments. All thank yous for wonderful events that have happened here recently in the city. We've been talking about it here tonight, the Community Day. It was just a massively successful event. Wonderful. I've received lots of feedback and 100% positive from everyone that I've spoken to, both from, from staff who helped, who worked so hard to put it on, from merchants, and most importantly, from San Bruno, San Bruno residents and the residents of our surrounding towns, who, some of whom hadn't been downtown in quite a while. So it was just really, really, really wonderful. Don't want to understate how much work it was for staff to not only plan it, but set it up and tear it down and manage it while it happened. And it just, it just really went, it was wonderful. So I just wanted to send a big thank you for that. Also, was able to attend the Juneteenth celebration this past weekend with my family in City Park. It was really well-done and enjoyable and educational experience for all of us. And I wanted to thank the team for putting that on. And then, and then today, you can see the mayor's background there, the dedication of Greenberg Field today, the reopening after the field being redone, thanks to the Junior Giants and the Jazz Community Foundation. So that's why I'm sporting my jersey today. It was, that was also a wonderful event. So lots of great things happening. I just wanted to spread some thanks around for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mason.
Yes, I'm just echoing Councilmember Hamilton. I was about to call you Medina by accident. Just because of the joke that's going around. It's been a long day. I just wanted to also just shout out to some community members because I think, and so I don't repeat what Tom said, I think that the last couple of weeks have just been such, it's just been wonderful to see community building in San Bruno, see people coming out and getting into downtown again. The Community Day, I think Karen Cunningham was just so vital and pivotal. She was essentially like the unsung mistress of ceremonies. So I just want to shout out to her because leading up to the event, I had so many calls with people asking both about what they can do about the Posy Parade and then what they could do with Community Day, how they can be involved, how they can be in the parade. And she was just very seamless and really tried to work with everybody to ensure that everybody who wanted to be included could be included. And so a huge shout out to Karen. I think for Juneteenth, Rhonda Collins, Melissa Roloff, and Barbara from the library, they did just a phenomenal job. I was, I didn't know about this, the Cappuccino Principal, who had been here for over 20 years, and his talk about what, you know, what he, the work he's done around equity while he was in San Bruno was very enlightening, along with the principal who followed in both. So I think just the ceremony they put together, the speeches, it was very nice, very nice, very informative. The food was great from the Rib Shack, and thank you to the city manager for just leading and supporting all of these efforts. And then the last one, I went to Sunday on the last day, was the San Mateo County Fair. Our own Stephen Seymour was asked to actually lead the art exhibit this year, and that's quite an honor for the entire county. And the artists that he put together, the lineup he put together around music and art from all different kinds, all different types of artists was really quite beautiful. When I walked in, it was already Sunday afternoon, and the place was packed. So that's a good showing because a year ago, it was not the same. And it's not to say that the person who procured everything, wasn't it? We were also still in COVID. But I do just have to say that. But I do just have to say that it was a great job. And San Bruno's cartless, or better known as coki, but our local muralist was also there painting, finishing up a mural that was in the San Mateo Daily Journal the week before. So it was just a really, really great couple of weeks here in San Bruno. And it's just been so nice to highlight San Bruno residents in the county, leaders in the county who are really getting things done. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Medina. Mr. Medina.
Yes, Mr. Medina, Mayor Medina. To not be so repetitive, but it was really incredible here. I think my colleagues have covered the majority of it. I also wanted to point out that Stephen Seymour also was pivotal in getting the artists and the vendors set up with Karen Cunningham for Community Day. So today's event at Greenberg Field, it has the same dirt as Pacwell Park. Is it still Pacwell Park? I don't even remember. Anyhow, and Alex was there, and who pitched yesterday, and was there for the kids today. And it was really amazing to see how nice something in San Bruno could be. And the Rotary and the Lions were there to help barbecue, and staff were there, and it just was just an incredible event. I did want to acknowledge that the, as much as it pains me to say this name, the Dodgers won PB Baseball Championship this year, and they beat the Hawks. It went to three games, and those are two really good teams. So I tip my hat to them, as much as it pains me that there's even a team named the Dodgers in the Bay Area. It's kind of weird, but anyhow. So thank all staff too for dealing with the budget and getting us to where we are throughout everything. So thank you. Thank you everyone.
Any other comments? Real quick, I won't, I'm going to try very hard not to mention what already has been mentioned, but I do want to acknowledge Saturday also was a busy day, but I mean, that was, there was cleanup that began at Posey Park, and that's going to be established back again. Was able to do a little bit there, not a lot, heading off to the city of Milbrae, where Councilmember Hamilton was as well, as we joined Milbrae for the ribbon cutting for their new recreation center, which opened. And the unique is that the, when it was first dedicated in 1970, there was a mayor there that dedicated it back there, and the mayor was there Saturday to see the dedication of the new two-story facility. Very nicely done. Also had the opportunity to go to an Eagle Scout Honor, the Honor Court, and that was always a pleasure to see the young people, what they've accomplished, what they've done, and the budgets that they've gone through. Going back a little bit to attending the Cappuccino graduation, it was great to see again, and just inspired by the diversity of even the welcoming, seven different languages, the band that played at the county fair, that also played two songs at the graduation that were students of the graduating class of 2022. And was able to hand, as an alum, was able to hand each graduate a rose upon their graduation after getting their diploma. Also, that night was the honoring of Police and Fire, which we did have Police and Fire that were honored and acknowledged. The Lions, back after a couple of years, for obviously due to COVID, held that in Foster City, and so it was nice to be there and to be a part of that, where it shows our public safety here in San Bruno, as well as across the area, what they do each and every day. And then I think it's already alluded to about Greenberg Field. I also want to talk, we're talking baseball, so baseball games that were held at City Park, the traditional ones on Posey Day. Want to thank the Lions, because it is the Lions Posey Parade. So I always want to acknowledge that and make sure that they know that we're aware of that. And I think that is about it. I'm sure there's more to come, but anyway, thank you everybody for your patience. And thank you, staff and the team, for tonight. And most everybody will be adjourned. However, we, the City Council, and some staff will be continuing on. We need to go back, and we had two items on our closed session. One was existing litigation, and one was negotiations. Because there were two items that needed to be placed on, we were not able to conclude. So the City Council is going to go back into closed session upon this adjournment, and the city manager, council has sent us a link for that meeting. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and wish everybody a very good rest of your evening. Thank you for your time, diligence, and for being here. And to the staff and the team, thank you very much. You make things happen and make it work here today. So with that, me adjourned. Everybody have a good, safe rest of your weekend.